...met in closed session with respect to labor negotiations between the city and SEIU Local 1021 and camp. An update was provided and direction was provided to the agency's designated representatives. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We will close that meeting and we will go to our special meeting of the evening. It was nice to see everybody, so many people here. I guess everybody knows tomorrow's my birthday. So, you can start singing anytime you want.
(singing) Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear mayor. Happy birthday to you.
I am quite honored because this also is my last night as being your mayor, which I've been very proud to serve for the past year. So, but I think there's probably something else on the agenda. So, this is a special, uh, oh, let me get my agenda. Well, we're all here, we're all called. Now, do we have any public comment? We will have comment after the study session regarding the Sherwin-Williams site. So, if seeing none, I would ask for Charlie. Are you ready to go to work?
Uh, yes, we are ready.
Come up and talk about Sherwin-Williams.
Senior Planner Miru Desai will make the staff presentation.
How are you?
Followed by a presentation from the applicant.
Good evening, Mayor Brinkman, council members. So, this is a study session on the Sherwin-Williams Urban Village Project. I'm sure you're familiar where the site is. It's an 8.5 acre site and it was a former Sherwin-Williams paint factory which ceased its operations in mid-2006. The site was remediated in January of this year and there are no restrictions on the type of land use other than a deed restriction regarding the soil extraction and groundwater extraction and any other site activities that may interfere with the installed remedial features. So, this is the site development plan. Just to get you oriented, we have Horton on the top, Sherwin on the side. This is the railroad tract. This is the Rifkin parcel owned by Noortes and this is the site of the Horton Landing Park. So, the way they have organized the site is around the central green and then you have another plaza area and the parcels are organized around that. Parcel A is actually to accommodate the existing building which will remain. It's a Tier 1 significant building and that will be an office building. So, just to give you the uses, Parcel A, the existing building will be office. It's about 70,000 square feet and about 35 to 37 feet in height. Parcel B here, just below it, will accommodate about 220 units and there will be ground floor retail of about 12,000 square feet. Parcel C here will accommodate 150 units and will be a residential. At this point, it'll be a residential only building. Then you have the Parcel D here, which will be a taller building up to a height of 100 feet and will accommodate 90 units. These two buildings here will reach the highest height of about 85 feet. This is sort of the circulation plan. As you can see, it's mainly Horton Street and Sherwin Avenue. That will be the main access points to the site and the arrows kind of show how the various garages would be accessed at this point. This is a bird's eye view and it's an illustrative massing view of the site. And just to get you oriented again, this tower that you see is the Rifkin site and it's not a part of this project. It's only shown for illustrative purposes. So, right now, it's awakened surface, it's a surface parking lot and what they are showing here is an entitled but not built 200-foot tower. So, that's just for illustrative purposes. So, the tallest building on their site would be at the northern end and that would be, that would reach a height of 100 feet. The remainder buildings, as you can see, they are kind of not the same height, but these two will reach at their highest 85 feet. Of course, this is the existing residential.
Seventy-five feet.
Seventy-five feet, sir. So, this is existing, existing building at Sherwin's site.
Can you just tell me how, how high the existing building is as a?
It is, it's 37 to 40 feet.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to explain how the site conforms to our existing land use policies. This is the land use designation map. As you can see, the site is split into two zones. The green is the public and open space and the remainder brown is MUR or the mixed use with residential. As the site is over five acres, a planned unit development permit is required and in the MUR district, it requires a mix of uses, one of which must be residential. And as I mentioned, one of, it's primarily a residential complex. The regulations do not specify an exact mix and the mix is to be determined by the Planning Commission and the council. So, the mix that is proposed is 460 residential units with 70,000 square feet of office and 15,000 square feet of retail. And the net developable area on the site is a little over five acres. In terms of residential density, what is permit, it lies in the 85 units per acre by right, which can be increased to 100 units per acre with bonus. What they're proposing is 86.8 units per acre and this calculates to them needing at least 12 bonus points in terms of public benefits. In terms of flow area ratio, allowed is two by right, which can be increased to three by bonus with bonus. Proposal is at 1.8 and therefore that is NFAR, that is allowed by right. Height, so the height districts are split. The northern end allows a higher heights. By right is 75, which can be increased to 100 with bonus. And the southern portion is, falls in 55 feet by right and increase to 75, 75 feet with a bonus. In terms of their proposals, Parcel B and C, as I mentioned, they reach a height of up to 75 feet, whereas the building on D reaches a height of 100 feet. So, it will need to provide public benefits with 100 bonus points. In terms of bonus points, I'm not sure why this is sticking. As I've mentioned, the project needs bonus points in two categories. One is the residential density for which it needs 12 points and the other category that it needs is 100 points, which is in the height category. So, the way it works, we do not add 100 plus 12 and to make it 112. We take the maximum category in which the project needs the maximum bonus points and in this case, it's the height. So, that will be the number of points that the project will need. So, it's 100 bonus points that is required for this project with the proposal on the books right now. The project does reuse a significant building and that straight away qualifies the project for 35 points. So, a remainder of 65 points will be needed. So, in terms of potential sources of bonus points, these include a variety and I'm just highlighting some of the, some of the potential ones which might be applicable to the site. One is the development of a public park, which is worth up to 50 points. The other could be providing public parking worth up to 35, providing family-friendly housing, again, up to 50 points. Public improvements which would be, which are outside what would be normally be required, such as improvement of Hubbard Street between Park and Sherwin Avenue. So, this is public improvements which does not front the project site and it is in addition to that. Or they could assist the city in acquiring and cleanup of a parcel which is part of Phase 2 of the Horton Landing Park and that could be one way of providing public benefits for bonus points. So, in addition to a public park of approximately two acres that they need to provide since a portion of their land use designation is open space, the general plan also calls for the greenway to traverse this parcel to connect between the Horton Landing Park to the north and the Park Avenue District or the Bay Trail to the south. The project does provide two acres of open space in form of the central green and the plaza area. And in addition, the project includes the design and construction of a park on the city-owned parcel adjacent to the railway road and the extension of the greenway from the Horton Landing Park to Sherwin Avenue. The project, in terms of project review, the project has been reviewed by a number of committees, including the staff's Development Coordination Committee or the DCC, as well as BPAC. There was a community meeting held on October 16th. The Planning Commission reviewed it in the last month as, in October 24th and in this month, actually we're in December, so in last month. So, last month, there were two more meetings at the Park Avenue District Advisory Committee and then again at Parks and Recreation Committee. All the comments have been outlined in the staff report. So, I will not be presenting all the comments other than the Planning Commission's comments and only the key ones at that. So, the Planning Commission felt that the proposed mix of uses was acceptable, although it was a little heavy on the residential use. Sorry, oops. The Commission felt that the active users in form of commercial or live-work spaces should be accommodated on both sides of the central green. They felt that the parcels were too big and needed to be broken up. They also felt that there needed to be an alternative approach to the garages should be considered. This was, I suppose was a response to about a number of residents from 1500 Park Avenue who spoke at the Planning Commission Study Session and who suggested that their preference would be for an alternative approach to the garages, which would be a driveway that would hug the railroad tract and connect to Halleck instead of using Sherwin Avenue. It was also suggested that the buildings be no taller than 79 stories on the northern end and six stories for the rest of the site. And there was a desire to see building designs that were modern and industrial in look with a use of brick and steel rather than multicolored stucco buildings that we have in our city. And there was a desire to see more family-friendly and mixed-income housing units. They also suggested that the applicant should work on their TDM measures now so that they could be analyzed as part of the traffic study. Typically, these measures get finalized at a later stage of, at a more, later stage of the process, typically right before the building permit. In terms of environmental review, staff has hired, is in the process of hiring LSA associates to conduct the environmental analysis. Permits that will be required is a PUD and a general plan amendment and the project will require approval from both the Planning Commission and the City Council. I believe there was a request to sort of walk you through how the application will proceed. So, right now, we are in the preliminary development plan process and we are right here. And we are in the pre-application stage and we are at the City Council Study Session. So, what has happened in the pre-application are the variety of different meetings from different bodies, including BPAC, Parks and Rec and, as well as Planning Commission. So, the next step would be for the applicant to make a formal submittal and then we would do an environmental review and draft conditions of approval, write a staff report, and then that will go to the Planning Commission for their, for their recommendation to the council. And then the council will have two readings. One, because it's an ordinance, we are going to be establishing a PUD, so that requires an ordinance, so two meetings are needed. So, so it will be two meetings at the City Council. Once that is completed, the applicant will come back for what would be called the FDP or the Final Development Plan for individual, oops. Let me see, other thing. Yeah, there you go. So, for individual buildings, for each individual building, they will need what is called a final development permit. It is sort of like a supersized design review to make it simple. And again, the process is kind of similar. There's a pre-application stage. Typically, we may be doing a community meeting at that time and then it'll go to the Planning Commission for a study session. Once that is done, they will apply formally for the, for their FDP application and then we will draft conditions of approval and will then go to the Planning Commission for a public hearing. The FDPs will not come to the council unless they get appealed. So, that's basically the steps that this project would take. So, we are asking for your comment and direction on the, specifically the following issues. Is the proposed mix of use appropriate for the site? Is the proposed siting of the parcels and buildings acceptable? Is the proposed circulation and layout of the streets appropriate for the site? What type of open spaces does the council wish on the site? What public benefits does the council prefer for the project? And of course, any other issues or issues that you may want to give us or comments you may want to give us. So, that concludes my presentation. The applicant does have a presentation and they will give you some little bit more details about their project. So, if there are any questions at this time, I'll be happy to answer them or otherwise I will hand it over to the applicant.
Why don't you let the applicant come up and speak and then?
I have a question for Maru.
What's that?
Maru, explain to me where, is there an EIR on this process?
Where? When or where? Oops.
No, no, how, how is this process involved with the EIR?
That's what I was going to show you. Where in the process the environmental analysis will take place? Is that the question?
Where is an EIR on this process?
We have not started it. We have, we are in the process of hiring LSA.
And we're anticipating that it will not be an EIR, but rather that it will be what's called a mitigated negative declaration, initial study mitigated negative declaration because the project is consistent with the general plan and we did an EIR, citywide EIR on the general plan. So, the intent is to tier off of the general plan EIR and only analyze the site-specific impacts of this project in a mitigated negative declaration.
Thank you.
So, that will, the part of traffic report, visual simulations would be part of it and typically it'll occur when they apply, make an application and so next thing that will happen is the environmental review.
I should point out though that although it's not as lengthy or detailed as an EIR, a mitigated negative declaration is still published for a 30-day public review and comment period and includes an analysis of all of the various potential areas of impact that the project may have.
Okay. Anything else, Maru? Okay, the applicant?
Good evening, Mayor Brinkman, members of the council. I'm Joe Ernst with SRM Ernst Development and on behalf of my partners, we want to thank you for the opportunity to present our vision for this project. We'd like to start by saying that we do understand the importance of this project to the community, to the council, and especially to those neighbors who are adjacent to the project. We do believe it will contribute significantly to the benefit, to the vibrancy of the neighborhood and achieving many of the goals, both of the community and of the Park Avenue District. The image of the site that you have in front of you, you know, shows the site as it was when in operation up through 2006, when Sherwin proceeded to decommission and demo the plant ahead of their remediation. The remediation was completed in 2012 with the off-haul of 150,000 tons of soil and as Maru mentioned, it did receive no further action status from the DTSC. There is a land use covenant in place that does not have any use restrictions, but it does require that we monitor and maintain existing remedial features in place and that we have to coordinate our plan to build around those, that we can't disturb them. Our plan, oop, let's see, oh, let me go to this backside. Our plan too has some history. We started with this plan. It evolved over a period of time from 2003 to 2005 through many meetings with the community at that time. We met several times with the Park Avenue Committee, who was meeting on a regular basis, and we went through two Planning Commission and Study Session. Many aspects of this plan, we believe, were incorporated into the current general plan and our current plan that we're presenting has been further updated to be compliant with the general plan. And tonight, we will share with you some updates to that plan that also incorporates some further feedback we've recently received from the community. Some of the key objectives as we, how do I go back here? So, this is the general plan slide here and all of these elements, you know, in the general plan are incorporated in our project. Some of the key objectives and our features in the plan, you know, one of the things we wanted to feature was diversity, diversity of uses, creating both day and nighttime populations, diversity in open spaces. In addition to the 2.0 acres of open space zoned on the site, we're actually going to have about three and a quarter publicly accessible acres of open space onsite. And when you add that to the city park parcel that we proposed to improve, that brings it up to about 5.2 acres of open space. So, we have equal open space to developable area, developable parcels on the plan. And that's going to give us the opportunity to really define the different areas of intended use for these open spaces and avoid conflict of open spaces. The building design will have diversity as well. We've, we're engaging four different architects to promote more of an organic feel to the project and promote that finer grain by having different looks, different buildings. Beneficial development, we know this is something that's important to the council, many members in the city. We do plan to pursue the full development bonus, which obviously includes creating community benefit, but that's for height. That will step back from the existing edges of Sherwin and Horton, but not increase above the base density. So, we, again, pursuing the full bonus for height, but not for further increases in density above the base. Some of these things may include, of course, the rehab of the Tier 1 building, the development of onsite public park space, improvement of the city park parcel, assisting the city to acquire the remaining railroad parcel that will link, better link Horton Landing Park and the greenway with our site, traffic calming measures on Horton, which we'll, you know, show later as we, with our updated plan, a robust TDM plan and family-friendly housing. The TDM plan that we are developing will include EZ passes, a combination of EZ passes, will include car share. We, it will include an effort to get an Emery go-around stop in the project, shared parking and bike amenities. Family-friendly housing, over 55% of our program is two-bedroom or more. Over 10% of our program is three-bedroom or more on 460 units. That's pretty significant in terms of those types of units and we're aware of the configuration of those units as presented by the city.
Could you repeat that percentage on the three-bedroom?
Fifteen, 10%. We will continue to support the bike pedestrian access, both onsite and in Horton and Boris Dramov, our planner, will discuss that a little later. Labor goals, we've had discussions with many of you and we share with you similar values when it comes to wages and local hire. You know, as we discussed and I think we generally agreed that, you know, we're willing to engage those, in those discussions and we are looking for, you know, a process that is flexible, that doesn't put us at a competitive disadvantage, you know, that achieves, focuses on the triple bottom line, you know, both sustainability, social and financial performance for the parties involved. And lastly, you know, retail is something that's been a, a big issue for certainly the adjacent neighbors. We've talked at length about that. We've received a lot of feedback on the type of uses. This will be neighborhood-serving retail, things the local community will want and support. And we would, would like to announce that we have a reached agreement in principle with our first tenant, if you will. It's with the group Alameda Bicycle. Owner is Gene O., who's here. Gene also, his shop, he's a very successful shop. It's heavily focused on the commuter and the family. Gene also runs all of the bike stations for Bart and Caltrain and also does some consulting for projects to develop bike programs as part of TDM programs. So, you know, his vision is a, is a bike café, which at its heart is a bike shop, but also include a café with coffee, microbrews, wine, some food. It's part coffee shop, it's part bike shop with communal repair benches and commuter focus. It's part cultural hotspot. I'm reading from his business plan here with guest authors and artists. And Gene is here tonight, so if you have questions, you certainly can ask him more about that. With that, I'd like to turn this over to Boris Dramov, our planner from Roma, to walk you through our plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe, and good evening, Boris Dramov from Roma Design Group. It's a pleasure to be here. I got to figure out how to change this. That's the only, how do I change this? Push down?
Click the left button.
Oh, the left.
Yep, there you go.
Okay, there we go. Well, you know, we began working on this project 10 years ago and really developed a vision for the site with Sherwin-Williams and Joe and Bruce for the project, which went through, as Joe was saying, through quite a bit of review, comment, integration with ideas in the community. And unfortunately, it took almost that period of time from them till today to, you know, demolish some of the existing buildings on the site, clean it up and really get it ready. So, these projects do take quite a bit of time, but here we are again, taking another look at it. Some changes that come forward as a result of that process, there were some reductions in height that were suggested in the general plan and those were integrated into the current schemes. But the vision for the area was to create a very special place in the heart of Emeryville, place that would really be a unique gathering space, something that exists in part in many different areas, but this would be an addition that would really be very special. And I'll get into that into a little bit more. As Joe mentioned, we are keeping Building 131 and that will be used as a commercial building. It is very interesting because there'll be a record of the past that was here and yet an evolution into the future as well. So, we're very pleased with that decision. We are also very interested in the extension of the Horton Landing Park through the site and we've been looking, this is the scheme that was developed by the city for that. And if you, to orient you, this is Horton Street right here and this is the edge of the Sherwin-Williams site at this end. So, the connection through here, you know, to that end. So, this is really part of the project and an important consideration. And in fact, how do we get the pedestrian bicycle connections through the project? And, you know, in a lot of the discussions, we started off with some very specific routes, but as we heard more from the community, we really started developing multiple ways in which pedestrians and bicycles could move through the site and, and extend the feeling of the greenway through the area as well. So, going back to the first isometric-type drawing that we prepared for this phase of the work, which responded to the changes that had occurred during the general plan amendment process, which did incorporate the basic idea, but really modified, as I mentioned, particularly height and some of the mix of uses was made more specific. But the circled areas on this drawing show some of the areas that through the process thus far with the Planning Commission and the Community Recreation and Parks Commission, we have started to develop some alternatives. In particular, I think there were some issues about both the way in which these buildings approached Sherwin and whether, and there could be more limited vehicular access from Sherman Street. So, we have tried to address that and I will show you in a minute our response. In addition to that, there was quite a bit of discussion about whether it was better to create the trade in the open space, which was provided for in the general plan, and put this building towards the north end of the parcel or move it forward into and create more of a end to the central green and then extend the open space in the Horton Landing on this side. So, I'll, I'll show you a little bit more on that. So, we started with this scheme in here, you know, with Parcel D being at the north end. And then through a lot of the discussion, there seemed to be quite a bit of interest in creating that more intimate space around this central green and then extending the Horton Landing open space and then extending it through the project as well. So, you know, that's a consideration and certainly we'd like to hear your point of view about it, but we're sort of heading towards this approach rather than the former one that was developed. If you look on this end, we're also looking at a reduction in height to 55 feet along the front edge and we've eliminated the vehicular access on this side of the street as well. We've created some alternate access within the project into the parking areas, which we believe will also help in terms of the commercial development. we believe will also help in terms of the commercial development on the frontages of the site as well, because it'll make it easier to reach them. So if you look at, this is the revised site plan again for the area, and what we've done is we've designated a reduction in height. We had already considered it along Horton on Parcel B2, but we also put it along this edge as well and made some modification to the circulation in that area. We've also, I wanted, I do want to point out one thing. We're drawing parcels right now. We're not drawing the buildings. Although there are some edges that have been changed as starting points, these are not the final massing of the buildings, you know, and that is part of what will follow in this process. These are just the parcels within which, so there aren't solid buildings in here. There's going to be open space that's part of the residential development, and that has to be evolved further, and they're going to be developed. So these are not buildings, these are parcels right at the moment, but it is a starting point for us and a way in which we've distributed the program. Now, in terms of circulation, and this is updated from where we were before, certainly there's going to be a direct bikeway connection to, along the edge, because that's, you know, people had asked for that, you know, make a direct connection along this edge. But we have also said that bikeways, you know, you can ride your bike through the central area and, as well. And certainly, we want pedestrian linkages on both sides through the center of the project, but we also want to create the vehicular linkages, we're, you know, here off of Horton and into the parcels. And we did keep one access off of Sherwin into Parcel B1, and then we have the internal access to the parking, I'm talking about, to the parking garages. So we've tried to diversify all the entrances, and there's certainly one to Parcel D as well through here. We have indicated the diversion that has been discussed in this area to not permit through traffic. This is a city idea really that has come up, and that we have indicated that it could be incorporated quite well into the project, and therefore only bicycles would come through, and of course pedestrians would come through here. There are two garage entrances in this area, and we'd have to provide limited access to them. But basically, it is this kind of diversion that has been talked about in this area to, you know, reduce the traffic flow through it. So we've tried to do that as well, and certainly there would be pedestrian access throughout. And we do have a muse also here between the existing building, 131 on Parcel A, and this building. But this muse is open to the public, except at night. This would be closed, this one would be closed in the evening hours, but it would be open otherwise throughout. And the remainder of the open spaces are really all the publicly open spaces, and they do include also the city parcel that is a separate project in a way, but part of the considerations here and can be developed as part of this project. But I think there's still some steps to go in the city acquiring the property and moving ahead on it. So let me spend a minute, because, you know, Joe talked about diversity. Diversity is really underlying this project in many ways, but placemaking is also a very major premise of what we're trying to do. Diversity in terms of architecture, in terms of both the residential building types, in terms of the commercial frontages, but also diversity in terms of open space and recreational opportunities. So it's not just one opportunity, but it is a variety of opportunities that can happen in this area. And I'll start with the, you know, the central green, which here we have it in cross-section. It's a very comfortably scaled space in terms of being able to have activities within the space in the middle, but well-connected to both sides, so that the activities can be interchanged between what happens on the building frontages, what happens in the center space, and also what happens if there are special events, and in fact, traffic is closed for a period of time to accommodate a major event in the space. So, you know, the space is very flexible in the way it can be accommodated, but it also, we wanted it to feel very comfortably scaled as a gathering space in the city, not too big, but also not too small. Let's look at the kinds of activities that we see on it. You know, it's, we, and again, we, we could only use these from other examples, but the Ramblas in Barcelona, by the way, the same size that we're talking about, much more of a hardscape, more strolling, but potential for gathering, as in this photograph from North Park, a project we designed with Bruce as the developer actually in, in San Jose. This is Santana Row, so it could have a very quiet, also similarly scaled space, just a casual relaxing, and, and also the kind of, you know, an event space. It'd close the streets, do something. This is from the Embarcadero, which we worked on for many years and designed. But there are also neighborly building frontages. We're looking at, you know, there, there are the potential of stoops from residential, there's commercial development on the ground floor, we have wide enough sidewalks where there can be extension areas on the other sides of the street. And I must say, I love this picture because I think it's Bruce and Joe a little later in life. You know, coming back to see how it looks. But this one is, you know, but, but they're much more open, there are many more open spaces, you know, throughout. And I'm including in this discussion the city-owned parcel, you know, places for dogs, places for informal gatherings, places for putting up a net and playing, you know, volleyball or, or kids' soccer and so on. So there are many opportunities for the different kinds of activities within these open, and they are connected, and they're integrated. Finally, I have to say one thing, because this question has come up a number of times about scale of parcels. And I purposefully put the project in the context of Emeryville. And I have to say, from my point of view, I think, I feel that it is a well-scaled, it is not the smallest block in Emeryville, nor is it by far the largest block, and it is well-fitted to the environment. And, you know, when we look at these kinds of things, we're also concerned not only about are we creating the proper scale in terms of block pattern, but we're also looking about creating the proper scale in terms of how the buildings integrate with the open spaces, and how the building massing ultimately, as it is developed, will give you a sense of breakup of the building form in the proper manner that really works. But, you know, this is an actual fit of the parcel into the surrounding area of Emeryville, and we're certainly here to discuss and take your comments. But, you know, at the same time, we look at this parcel as being a unique transit-oriented opportunity within Emeryville, and in terms of the walking distance and connections to the Emery Station, in terms of the potential for getting on the Go-Round and to BART, and certainly even within BART, and the kinds of measures, TDM measures, that Joe was discussing that can be brought in. So really well-fitted site. It, you know, industrial land that no longer serves that industrial purpose, which is a lot of what Emeryville has done over your history, and made it fit in and create a great place to live, work, play, and I think this is another opportunity to achieve, you know, those kinds of goals. So I'm going to stop and let you ask questions or...
Well, we'll probably do, hopefully, for public comment, three minutes each, but before I do that, does any of the council members have any comments at this time?
I'll save my comments till after the public comment.
Okay. So what we're gonna do is, it's, yes, you had...
No, no, I was gonna say, I'm gonna leave that one up, so that, you know, if people want to point to it.
So what I'd like to do is have, anybody that wants to talk, please stand up here, get in kind of like a queue, and it's, everybody will have three minutes to express themselves, and Karen will tell you when your three minutes are up. I would assume there's gonna be a lot of people that want to talk. Scott, you wanna be the first one? So if you wouldn't mind, line up behind Scott.
Thank you.
Scott Downey, 1420 45th Street, adjoining the project. I've been on your Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee for maybe 12 years and seen our city evolve to be a real bicycling city. I just want to tell you that I came from San Francisco this evening. I'm working two days a week in San Francisco, and I commute from Emeryville on my bicycle to West Oakland and go to my job, which is at the Cannery. It's near Fisherman's Wharf and that area, and it's 30 to 33 minutes from my door to the door of where I work. It's incredibly quick, and I think that if we can get this site to be as connected as I've become on my bicycle in BART to our Bay Area, if we could become connected to West Oakland with the Emery Go-Round, and make that a requirement of the project somehow, have that be a component. If we could have the way that people live in the site so connected to walking, bicycling, and public transit, that their need to take their vehicle and add more vehicles to the street would be less, because they would want to walk public transit or bike. Have bicycles available, not in the dark dank garage, but right in the public space where you meet your neighbor and your bicycle is well-protected and it's a real part of the culture, and integrated seamlessly into the project itself, and have that come forward and not be a normal podium-style garage attitude about it. But have the TDMs be a kind of new paradigm for our city that the future users of the site would embrace and would want to come here for that reason, and that these be made to a standard where in the future, people could buy these as condos, and we would have long-term residents who really want to be here. That would be a wonderful component to have in the site. The kind of density that the site is asking for, if this isn't done, and it's a normal podium-style drive-in, drive-out, is pretty significant. And I think that you should require less parking than they have asked for. They could, I think, live with less parking, they might even be happy to have less parking, and still have the units served by the parking that's available, and unbundle the parking. So renters would pay extra to park, but they also would not perhaps be paying as much rent. Those that wanted to park and pay more would. Office users could have some space available the same way, but by having less parking, it would encourage the site to have less vehicle trips, but still be integrated in our wider region.
Thank you very much, Scott. Appreciate that. Okay, who's next?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, citizens of Emeryville. My name is Rachel Bryan. I'm with the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers. I'm a journeyman electrician, and I currently work for my local as a community liaison, compliance, and governmental relations rep. I also sit on the executive committee of the Alameda Labor Council and help to represent 100,000 working families in Alameda County. I'm here tonight to highlight the importance of local hire. Local hire ensures that tax dollars are invested back into the community, lessens environmental impact of commuting, and strengthens community involvement. And most importantly, it preserves employment opportunities in construction. Policy to implement local hire gives the citizens of Emeryville the best value as well as the most protection. This project should not move, should move forward with policy in place to make sure that locals go to work first. Residents of Emeryville, Berkeley, Oakland, Alameda, and San Leandro. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
And good evening. Roy Blackshire, Emeryville, 94662. I stand before you this evening to share that I am excited and elated that this development is coming to Emeryville. And as Mr. Boris pointed out, that I caught that it's been 10 years in the making. Having said that, I feel Emeryville should strike while the iron is hot. We have the opportunity to bring forth a lot of new technology, one being the PG&E Net Zero, which basically comes in and retrofits existing buildings to save money, to utilize different natural resources. I think that will be a great place for the Greenway bike slash pedestrian path and/or the, the walk path at nighttime. It, it'll be there forever. It's something that we don't have to come back and retrofit, retrofit like the Hotel Valencia in Santana Row, which is happening there. All along commercial, densely commercial areas, they're retrofitting, they're trying to save. We have the opportunity to do it now, before it's groundbreaking, so on and so forth. And what better way than to use the experts who do it? Not a fly-by-night company that comes in, utilizes, saves a buck, lets, while we have the chance, make it nice, long-enduring for Emeryville. Again, Roy Blackshire, thank you.
Thank you very much. Would you mind signing in? Actually, I'm gonna ask everybody, when you come up, after you're done speaking, would you please sign in? That'll help Karen a lot, so she won't yell at me after we're done, because this is my last meeting, and I don't like to be yelled at my last meeting. Good evening.
Good evening. Hello, my name is Brian Azavito, and I'm a sheet metal worker, and I just wanted to talk about this project. I think it's a good project, and I just wanted to talk about, well, I think we should have areas standard wages. I think they're important, so we, we could make fair wages to live in the area that we live in, you know, because the Bay Area is an expensive place to live, so I think that's clear.
Well, thank you for that. Okay, who's next? Good evening.
Good evening, my name's Kate Rutter. I'm from 4230 Halleck Street, so part of Blue Star Corner, and I wanted to just speak on behalf of a couple of my neighbors who were particularly interested in the garage entrance, and I'm glad to see that that's been at least verbally kind of addressed. I'd also like to reinforce what my neighbor said about the transit. So we've been able to go down to one car because of the good connections with AC Transit, with BART, and with the Emery Go-Round, and we're looking forward to car sharing, is helping us be a zero-car, all biking, walking family. So whatever you can do as well to reflect that kind of burgeoning trend, I think is very important. I also wanted to speak a little bit to, as the, as the project goes forward, especially around the areas adjacent to the railroad track, eyes on the street is such an important component for public safety and kind of accessibility to, just having the, the architecture reflect, that people are kind of keeping an eye out for the, for the activities in the neighborhood. We've had a couple incidences of drug busts in Sherwin Avenue, and I know how important it is to have two things, a good walkable area where people can walk their dogs and some dog amenities, we get a lot of traffic that way, and also just having eyes on the street that are willing to call or to kind of step in as needed. And lastly, I'd just like to reflect that any of the verbal commitments or things really be written in to all development documents with pretty severe consequences when things slip through or just kind of don't happen. I've seen that happen in the past, and that's certainly something that the community that I'm kind of speaking for, as well as myself, will be watching with an eagle eye. So good public, good public kind of accountability on that would be much appreciated. That's my comments.
Thank you very much. Okay. Who's next? Well, I know this guy.
Good evening, and thank you for your time. My name is Matt Maloon, and the main thing I wanted to touch on was that we have an opportunity here to promote training of, of young people in this area. There's, there's a choice between sometimes on construction jobs where the, the workers that actually build the jobs, just kind of throwaway jobs where they're not actually engaged in, in learning a craft and a trade. An important part of learning a construction craft is on-the-job training. And this, this project is an opportunity to help young people learn a craft that they can have throughout their working lives, and... have throughout their working lives. And so it's an opportunity we shouldn't miss, okay? And so we have a choice, and I'd like to see that thought included in this project.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Okay. Who's now next? The whole bunch of people out there. Oh.
Just very briefly.
Yes.
Michael Murphy. I've been a resident of Emeryville for 40 years, right across the street from this project. And I watched the utilization of Horton Street by bicyclists increase and be enhanced, but also, at the same time, the traffic flow has hugely, hugely increased. It's a constant flow. That's normally a bike path of some sort, but it's really, really dangerous. The traffic flow is huge. With the impact of the traffic being brought in by this project, I wonder what's going to happen to, I mean, you know, everything I've been hearing said this is a bicycle-friendly project. It's designed to get the bicycles in and out, move around, which means they're going to be bicycling around that very, very dangerous and increasingly dangerous street as the traffic increases. What I heard early was a brief comment suggesting that the city had considered mitigating the flow of that street, which would hugely, hugely enhance both the safety and the practability of that street. I don't know whether that's actually going to happen. I don't know what status that is, but I stepped up only to heartily encourage that. You know, that's the major artery to all of these projects, to all the communities in here. And it is, despite being designated a bike-friendly path, it is not. Anything that can be done in the facilitation of this project to enhance that would be hugely, hugely appreciated by the neighborhoods. And I think once every Friday or something, we get like 1,000 bicycles coming down Horton Street. It's like, what? It's like, no, just step out there and they just keep coming and coming and coming. And it's a statement that this is a pathway that's used hugely by the people, by the bicyclists that use it. As long as that can stay in the forefront of your mind while you're developing this as something that can be done to both enhance the project and enhance Emeryville, it would be hugely appreciated.
Thank you very much. Okay, anybody else on the subject?
Hi, Judy Timmel. Speaking on behalf of Residents United, a group of residents from all over the city. And we got together and we have met with Joe Ernst and others from the developers. And we have presented them with our priorities, and I'd like to just reiterate them to you. I'd like you to know there is a lot of resident support for the labor agreements of local hire and area standard wages. I know you hear a lot just from the unions, but we do support, our group does support these practices and agreements. Secondly, in the housing, we're very happy to see there's family-friendly housing. I didn't hear too much about affordable. I wanted to make sure that was included. And really affordable, because it would really enhance our schools and the ability of people who work in Emeryville to live in Emeryville if we had more affordable housing. Pedestrian and bicycle access, it looks excellent. We want to reiterate that Horton Street should be maintained either as a bicycle boulevard or as bicycle pedestrian only. And when we are talking about subsidies for education, please let's not forget about early childhood education or ECDC. Finally, we urge support and subsidies for locally-owned businesses as well as locally-serving. We'd like to see the developer actually make sure that the rents are affordable for small businesses. And the Planning Commission has recommended that both sides of the Parkway be business-related. I think that only makes sense. How can you have a vibrant back-and-forth, walking, retail area if you have only one side of the street? I don't think live-work is really going to attract that kind of pedestrian traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. So I see we probably have some people here for the Emery Go Round.
Just a few.
Just a few. So Sharon? So whoever else would like to speak about this item, would you please line up behind Sharon so I don't miss you? Because there's a lot of people.
Okay. Sharon Wilsher, community liaison for the 45th Street Artist Co-op. And I made the same comment at the Planning Commission meeting. But I think understandably, as immediate neighbors to this project, we're concerned about the traffic impacts. And partially because of the proposed density and also just because of limitations of the site. Got the railroad tracks on one side, Novartis on the north, and so, you know, really limits some of those access points. So we are in favor of a lower density rather than the potential maximum density. And I know that things keep changing, so I really appreciate that. I'm not quite sure where we are with all that issue right now. This is sort of going on with the initial proposal. But now, just not as the committee liaison, but as a 32-year resident of Emeryville, right across the street from the project, in an area that maybe it's just my perspective, I consider to be sort of our warehouse arts district in the city. And I'm really very excited about the possibilities for the project and a possibility to enliven a really interesting section of our city and to help bring many of the goals and the spirit of the Park Avenue District to life. To me, one aspect of truly integrating the project at Sherman Williams Site into the neighborhood will be access points for many different vantage points. And the existing building, Parcel A, really takes up about 2/3 of that, of the whole Horton Street frontage there. And I don't know if it's possible, I mean, now that it's mentioned that the muse will be closed at night, if, to consider any way in which Parcel A might just have one access point that moves east to west. And the same thing for other access points in the project, that they really pull you into that central area, into the green corridor, into the retail area. Just visually, it seems as if a lot is moving sort of north to the south. That's just me looking at this. Also, just briefly, and I know this will all come out in the traffic studies, I don't know how to do the little laser thing, but the access on Horton Street that's just to the north of Parcel B, I had understood when we had the last Park Avenue District meeting that it was a pedestrian access, and I guess it's not. It's actually vehicular now. And there are two driveways to the east of that, and I could point them out, but there's a main access from the Artist Co-op. And then just to the north of that is the Novartis exit. So they're going to, they sort of, you know, are on either side of that. So I presume that whatever those issues are will come out in traffic studies, et cetera. Certainly a concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Okay. Uh-oh.
Good afternoon, Council, Mayor Brinkman. Stephen Keller, I am a member of the Economic Development Advisory Committee and a Planning Commissioner. And I had a written statement I was going to make, but after seeing this new revised plan, I have to shift gears here. I think this plan is a worse plan. I think the buildings are way too close together, and the Planning Commission did ask them to break up the parcels to meet with the general plan as a fine-grained city. The planner talked about how he compared this to existing buildings. That was kind of an error on his part because that's not what we want. We do have big blocks. We have massive places where pedestrians and bike can't get through. That's what we don't want. We don't want to create that here. We want to break up the buildings. So I'm really disappointed to see that these buildings are now bigger and a bigger mass of buildings. I don't understand why we want to disconnect our parks. I don't know why we want parks here, here, and here. I don't know why. In the north, we want to place a park in the shade behind the tallest building that we're going to have. That park north of that building will constantly be in the shade. So I don't understand how that's a good idea. The design doesn't remove traffic from Sherman. They still have to come in from those streets to get into those new garages. It's going to put more traffic on to the essential green. I just don't understand how we've improved this project by doing this. We have Halleck Street. It needs to be brought into the picture so we could take cars way north of the site. Why do we want a building and a park to front a railroad track and the back of IKEA and a parking garage? If we had our option in this city to put a park, would our first place be to put it next to the railroad tracks? I just don't get how this whole thing makes any sense. So I'm really disappointed. I was hoping to see something a little better in their redo, and I hope the council really makes that request to them because I think this has gone south of where it was before, and I don't think it was all that great. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I ask one favor? We have a lot of, shall we say, older people than me here tonight. So anybody younger than me, would you mind standing up and maybe letting somebody sit down your seat?
That's nice.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
So if you're older than me.
How old are you, Karen? I know your birthday is tomorrow. Today, how old are you?
So all you young whippersnappers, stand up. Sorry, we don't have more room.
Is there a TV downstairs?
The TV is on downstairs as well.
Okay, so there is a TV set downstairs that you can also watch this meeting. And then you can be more than, entertain you coming up and for your three minutes of comments.
And it's wonderful to see so many people engaged this evening. So thanks for coming and putting up.
Yeah, I mean, this is amazing.
Mayor?
Yes.
Keep the doors.
And we have to keep the doors open for.
And clear.
For the fire official and clear.
Don't stand in the doorway.
So please, please come on in, sit down. Buzz, Buzz, help me a little bit. Get some of these people in here.
Do you think Emery Go Round folks could go downstairs and watch until this?
No rubber bullets.
Well, they're already up here, but.
Well, they need, some of them need the elevator, so it's harder.
Yeah.
I think we can work it out. Okay. Is this Ken Bukowski?
Yes, Ken Bukowski.
Good evening, Ken.
Hey, I'm excited about this project. I think people have asked for a lot of things for the community, and I hope we can all accomplish them. Somebody's going to have to decide how much profit this developer can make to sustain this project. Because if you limit the road and you limit the size of the buildings and you subsidize everybody and then you have affordable housing, it just doesn't seem like there's going to be enough money to go around. So I think somebody's going to have to decide what a level of profit is and then work backwards to figure out what you can have and what you can't. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Now, is there anybody else that would like to speak about the Sherman Williams Site? You have, I'm going to, okay, Brian. Anybody out for Brian?
Yeah.
Two. Now, we got two? Is there a third? If there's a third, please line up over here. We got three. Is that it? Okay, thank you. Yes, Brian?
Okay. So this project has downsides for the residents and the neighbors, and it has upsides. But I think everybody here should understand one thing that's really, that hasn't been discussed here at all, and that is, the city of Emeryville is going to make essentially no money annually from this project. Because it's a very resident-heavy project, and residents don't, the city doesn't make money on residential projects. As a matter of fact, the city of Emeryville actually loses money in the aggregate and on average on residential projects, a little bit. Now, this project has, is mostly residential, has some retail, a little bit of commercial to offset the losses perhaps. But what we're really talking about here is that the city is going to make no money off of this project. So the fact that we're going to make no money, I think, compels us to insist that the downsides of this project be mitigated to a greater extent than they are. So the downside, of course, is the extreme amount of traffic. So our lives, the residents' lives, the neighbors' lives are really going to be impacted negatively by the huge amount of traffic this project is going to generate. It's basically 10% of our city suddenly now put in here. So it's a huge glut of cars. Since we're not making any money off of this project, I expect the developer to show more upside. And there's just not enough upside, frankly. It just looks like a standard Emeryville project in terms of the upside. And it's just not enough, frankly, to offset the negative, the downside and the fact that we're not making any money. So we're not making any money, so why do it unless there's plenty of upside for the residents? They haven't shown that. Okay, here's some of the things we could mitigate this glut of traffic. AC Transit buses passes in perpetuity for the residences. Emery Go Round stop at the project site, not just making an effort, but getting it in writing and getting it guaranteed. Emery Go Round to West Oakland BART, of course, has been talked about. That's critical. I think we should ask the developer to donate money to the South Bayfront Bicycle-Pedestrian Bridge that goes over the railroad tracks to the Bay Street Mall. We don't have enough money to do that bridge. Here's our chance to leverage our, this really valuable site to get this bridge, this bike pedestrian bridge built. So I think you should demand that. The developer should donate money to study the Horton Street Bike Boulevard, Level 4 and then Level 5 traffic calming, because the city doesn't have enough money to conduct these studies, we're finding out. And it's critical that we have this bike pedestrian boulevard. So those are some of the ideas. I've got more, but I ran out of time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. I think we have three more on this item.
Hi, my name is Tim Curran. I'm a longtime resident directly across the street from Parcel A. I wrote you earlier today about my concerns about transportation demand management. I'd like to address why I'm concerned about that. While there have been offerings and there are ideas floated about, when I look at the presentation of the plan and I look at the public benefits that have been offered to the city, for instance, maintaining Parcel A, while they are maintaining Parcel A, I'd like you to notice that they are shrouding 50% of Parcel A's historical presence by Parcel B and calling it a muse, a very narrow area. They're not really giving a full public benefit to Parcel A, to its historical significance. They're crowding it with architecture. Similarly, if you look at the city parcel of the park along the railroad tracks, that's gone back and forth for a while, and it's defined by the remedial features that have been put on the land by the poor maintenance and the destruction of the land by Sherwin Williams. So they've designed their plan and also made excuses for it because of the damage they've done to their own property. So given that sort of outlook, when I look at this proposal, when I hear things about TDMs and whatnot, I'm very skeptical that once the TDM's proposals and whatnot go through staff and go through the whole proposal, that they get watered down and that we get something like Parcel A, a muse, a narrow alleyway on what should be a nice, open feature of the historical building. It'll be a benefit to the developer, but most likely, it won't be a benefit to the city. I'd also like to say, as I said in the letter, that traffic is going to be a very big problem. As the Planning Commissioners noted many times, it'll be a traffic problem that all the city's going to have to deal with. It's one feature that's maintained, that's been throughout the presentation, is the arrows coming and going from the site. And look at them and where they go. And the city is going to have to make hard decisions about how to handle that traffic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think we have one more speaker. Are you the last?
Good evening. Teresa Kounoskis. I live at 4333 Holden Street, the 45th Street Artist Cooperative. I've been a resident for 25 years. I am a mother, a walker, a bicyclist, and a driver. And I just wanted to reiterate that you have good public accountability for this project. You have a holistic approach to the transportation planning, that you safely accommodate all the users of roadways, including bicyclists, pedestrians, transit riders, and children. Our concerns are density, the transit options, fewer parking options, inclusion of pedestrian overpass, and a continuous flow for bicyclists, which will emphasize having less danger for them. Thank you.
Thank you. So that's it? I'm going to close the public comment. Is there, how would the council like to proceed? Ruth, you want to go first?
I have comments, yeah. Well, first of all, where's Joe? Let's see. There you are. I want to thank you for.
We've spot-righted Joe.
For heating public comments and already making some changes and tweaks based on the input that you've gotten from the community so far. I appreciate that responsiveness. I want to mention something that hasn't been talked about yet, but when I see the central green, it reminds me of a very narrow way at the public market that has a well-known wind tunnel effect. And when you have two long buildings without enough air circulation and breakthrough, to me, that's a recipe for that green and that middle area that you want to be active to not be active because it'll be so unpleasant to be there, especially in the afternoon prevailing winds as they whip up. Oops, I have to find my comments here. So that's the. So that's the first thing. I also want to appreciate the large number of two and three-bedroom units. I don't think there's been a project of this size that's come along that's had more bedrooms. And I've said this publicly, I'll say this again, I think Emeryville has more than enough studios and one bedrooms. So I would hope that we wouldn't see that in any appreciable way in this, in this project. The Central Green, again, aside from being blown around in the afternoon, looks like a fancy driveway, but I'm not really sure how that middle space could be, could be used. I would like to see the city park, not on the backside of the project, but brought inside and move the Building C closer to the tracks and move the city parcel and have the city do some kind of land swap so that this whole project isn't so angular. To me, a building along the tracks is a better edge, and moving the city park inside makes it easier to patrol, it puts more eyes on the park. Right now, that just likes, looks like a nightmare to patrol at nighttime along the train tracks and along, at the corner where Hallock Street comes in. So I would love to see a bunch of those buildings and the, the site plan shifted around that way. Someone, one of the speakers spoke about creating a break between the edge of Parcel A, the existing building, and to create another east-west circulation element. And I think that edge along B2 is ripe for another, for another throughway of ingress and egress. Questions not for today, but for a later day are, what kind of lead standards, if anything, will be applied? Do you want to put solar panels on the roof and generate some power? Let's see, what else? The last thing I'll say is to have the, well, second to last thing I'll say is that the, I would hope that the Park Avenue Overlay District Design Guidelines would be used in force. I fear that PUD processes a way of kind of circum, working their way around the Overlay District Guidelines. I wouldn't want to see that happen. And I'm really glad that the Alameda bicycle guy, I don't see him right now, but is already, thank you, has already expressed an interest in coming. I think that's a unique blend of a retail use that actually might have a chance of working. Many buildings and projects have been conditioned for a corner café that never happens, and it's not viable. So the fact that you have a bike shop, a café, various elements in there, the more you could throw into your entrepreneurial endeavor, I think the greater viability you're going to have. So just to condition another corner café that doesn't happen, we can't support so many corner cafés that we've already approved in this town. And, oh, and lastly, this project, especially if you're looking at long frontages, would be really nice to have townhomes as part of the design. I used to live in a townhome complex here that went from four children to something like 20 when I left, living there. And townhomes could be family-friendly housing, or, and even if they come close, then families make it work. So perhaps Parcel C or one of the parcels, the longer parcels could be designed as townhomes. I think that could be very attractive.
That's it? Nora?
Yeah. Ruth, I happen to agree with you on the green area. Don't sit down, Joe. We need your expertise here. You're on the hot spot tonight. Let's start with Parcel D. Having that green space in the shadow is just a bad mistake. If you move it to the south of Parcel D, then you have a really much more expansive park, especially if you follow on with Councilmember Atkins's suggestion that we work out a deal with the city, that that city open space be put into the central area. That's a rather narrow area now. And I would, and that means that Parcel C would be slanted toward the railroad track. The whole idea is to get a usable, a usable green space in the middle of this project. And if you move the Parcel D green space and you move the city to the middle, then, then we're, we're going to get something that has some substance to it. Right now, it's just a dib here, a dib there. Doesn't, doesn't do it for me. So, so that's one thing. And that is a really important thing because it speaks to the quality of life, not just now, and not just for the people in, in these units, but for the surrounding neighborhood. And then the, the other issues, of course, we've all beat this to death. This is the traffic. We've got to address that. We've got to analyze that traffic study. The TDMs and the consideration of the TDMs, absolutely important early on in the process. And then on the public benefits, staff has asked what kind of public benefits. One of the things that I'm particularly interested in, and we had labor representatives coming up before us today, is the training of our youth in these specialized trades. If there's some way, as this project moves along, that we can incorporate some type of help for our young people who really are kind of neglected by the trades right now. So that's a high priority to me. The, the other thing is on, on local hire, the, the young lady mentioned some cities that would be included. I look at it more, this is a huge project, and you're going to need really, really good craftspeople, really good, good laborers. I, I would propose that local hire means the Green Corridor, which Emeryville was in on starting, and that goes from Richmond all the way down to Fremont. And so that's a local hire. We're all here together in the East Bay, and we want to make a good economy in the East Bay. So that's the few of the comments that I have.
Do you, just quick, do you want me to, to address these, or want our team to address?
No, just, just, no.
You can sit down, actually, if you'd like. Either way, it's fine with me. So I, I really appreciate, actually, the comments of the public. Particularly, I think everyone's really improving this project as we go. I've seen changes already, and I, I see more changes, and I appreciate the council members who have spoken. And I agree with what I've heard. I haven't heard anything that I disagree with. So I, I also want to address that quality of life issue that I think we find so important, and how it extends beyond the people who will, in the future, live here, or the people who live near here, but it goes also to the process and the construction. And so I want to echo the labor agreement ideas, the local hire. I think Green Corridor is a good way to define it, or East Bay. But I would like to see the, the youth engaged as well. I know there's some fabulous apprenticeship programs, and if we could make sure that Emory Unified is plugged into that as well, and other youth who have already graduated from our schools as well. I would like to ask for a minimum of 20% affordable units. And I, I feel like you made a mention to that, but I didn't hear a number associated with it. I'd like to ask for a minimum of 33% of the units to be ownership. And I know, you know, the market changes and rentals are hot right now, but in terms of the growth of our town, it's important to have that mix as well. And so the fact that you're differentiating the different parcels, I think, will make that something that's doable. Very pleased to hear about 55% larger than one-bedroom units. I tip my hat to you for including that. I had asked for 50%, so I'm really pleased to hear 55. I agree with a higher building on the north end. I'm concerned about that shade issue for a beautiful park. That would be a shame, I think. And I'm not actually afraid of density and height on this site. I know there are differing opinions in town. But the, the greater the density, the greater the height for one portion, and this portion, Parcel D, if it's all the way at the north end, is actually, no one else is immediately, immediately impacted, obviously, views and shade, et cetera, are impacts. But the higher it goes, the more open space can be available to the rest of the community. I'm, I want to tip my hat again for showing Horton Bike Boulevard with the diverter. I think that makes your project interesting, unique. By dividing the vehicle access from the south and from the east or north, I think neither side, the neighbors on either side will feel half of those impacts. It's hard, if someone were living in Parcel D, to insist that they only enter on Horton unless they actually can't get through on the north-south. And so this is a decision that has not yet been made by our city. I know our B-PAC has talked about having different kinds of traffic calming. Horton Bike Boulevard clearly needs help in reducing cars, and some people spoke very eloquently about that tonight as well. So that's a decision by the city, but by showing it in your plans, I feel like you're taking that seriously, and you're showing that this project works with it as well. So I appreciate that. Someone else mentioned this, but I think this project is so significantly impacted by bike and pedestrian access across the train tracks. And that's the ever-elusive South Bayfront Bike Ped Bridge. The city is, has some money set aside for that from redevelopment, which went away. It's in an escrow account pending our state's appeal of the lawsuit that we won on Bike to Work Day that passed May. And so we're waiting for that money to be available for us to continue. That, that bridge has been planned for more than 10 years, as I understand it. And it will not be enough money, I'm sure, after all of this time, to build it. And so I think a significant contribution from this project, because the impacts are so significant to this project as well, would be appropriate. I appreciate your, the EZ Pass, which is the AC Transit Bulk Purchase Passes. Transit passes would be a wonderful TDM measure to include the bike amenities. You've mentioned ample spaces for parking, bike parking that is easily accessible, as has been mentioned this evening as well. I feel that all of those are essential, actually, to mitigating the traffic impacts. There are street improvements that could be part of the public benefits as well. Those could include Sherwin, Sherwin Avenue itself, which has a rather odd curb in the middle of the road, and Hallock, and the cost of putting in a permanent diverter, also on the Horton Bike Boulevard. The very southern edge of the project, which has been reduced in height in response to neighbors, I don't have the dimensions in front of me of the buildings that it faces, which is across Sherwin Avenue on the west side, so that's 1500 Park Avenue. What the height, that building has step backs as the mass goes up in the middle of the building. And I just want to be, I can't remember, 55 or 45 is the final number. It shows 55 on here. That, that matches across the street. I'm just not sure what the height is on the other side.
Yeah, the height across the other side is in the upper 40s, depending on, you know, to 50, depending on where you are on the street, because the street has slope to it. But if you go look on Horton Street, you know, Building Parcel A is 41 feet tall. Across the street, the Co-op Building is about 17, 18 feet tall. And the building to the south of 45th is about 22 feet tall. And if you stand on that three, so you've got some big differences in height there. If you stand on that street, it still feels very comfortable. It feels very nice. You've got the trees. So those differences in height don't create an uncomfortable situation. So we're hoping, we believe, that 55 feet versus 45 to, or 45, 55 to 50 or upper 40s is negligible. You might not even notice it. You know, our goal is to step it back far enough so people on the street don't see the portion that goes up higher to 75.
So that's key, I think. And maybe that street portion should only be 45, and there could even be incremental up to the 75. So it not only has to do with the height, in my opinion, and how it matches the other side of the street, but it also has to do with how close the building comes up to the sidewalk, and that sense of space. So it's a vertical space, but it's also horizontal space. And in my, in my opinion, that height on the, on Sherwin should really only be, you're 41 or 45, and not a 55. And to, and I think a good architect would see that matching the character of, of the, of the neighborhood across the street is important there. Let's see. I also am not afraid of the density. I mentioned, you know, a taller building, which is fine with me. I feel like the density is what's really important to support the retail and the mix that, of tenants that you hope to bring as well, that we hope to see there. In terms of other contributions, it's been mentioned, contributions to Emery Go Round, which is kind of a part of your package, the unbundled parking, parking, which is wonderfully required in our town, car share on site, I mentioned the bike amenities, and the shared parking within the site. So I also am someone who firmly believes in reducing the parking and finding ways to have parking uses residential, office, and commercial overlap. We don't need separate parking for each use. And that actually extends, I've noticed through the Park Avenue District Plan, to neighborhood uses. So this is one, one neighborhood in itself, but actually, because it is so close to the Artists Co-op and to other uses across Sherwin, Sherwin Avenue, I know that, you know, right now, there happens to be the use of a badminton club, which has parking needs at a certain time of day that seem to overflow and be more than as kind of usable on the street. So seeing other uses across the street that could share that parking, and not just having the boundaries of the mix of uses on the site. Finally, I think the best way to manage parking, and if you are doing less parking on your site, there will be overflow, and that's the fear of the neighborhood, is having spillover onto the streets and impacting residents. So this, I don't have a crystal ball. I don't know how far from the future, but I feel that Emeryville has to get real about our free on-street parking and making sure that we manage that parking well, so that everybody can have use of that parking, all the different uses, whether you're a resident, or you're a customer, or you're an employee, but making sure that we really manage that. Someday, that may include charging for parking on the street. I think that's actually much kinder than giving out tickets. And so there is a certain investment that's required, capital, to put that in place. And this project would certainly be a wonderful, this would be a great opportunity to contribute to something like that, with the community's input, of course. I think, I want to echo one other comment about the safety and visibility. I'm not sure what the answer is, but I want to be sure that any public space and the green spaces are viable, are visible, are able to be safe places for people. So however, that can work into the design. And I have two other items. One is the parcels, the, the north-south, Parcel C and Parcel B. Again, I know these are massings. They just show kind of where the buildings go, but I feel strongly that there should be east-west access. And Parcel C may end up being, you know, three or four buildings instead of just one large building. I think that would help with the wind tunnel concern, and would certainly help with pedestrian access and make it feel like a fine-grained city, which is one of our goals in our general plan. When Maru presented the flow of the process earlier, she talked about how the final development plan will only go to the Planning Commission. It can be appealed to the City Council. And there was a community meeting in brackets, which kind of implied, I think, that it's an optional. And I would just, given how open you've been to community input, I would strongly recommend that you include a community meeting at that point. There will be more thoughts and, and more opportunities then for people to weigh in. So with that, I'm done. Thank you. Thank you.
Are you ready, Jeff?
I am, but there's mostly a lot to echo from what's been said up here. For me, it's important that we have a project labor agreement for this development. I want to see area standard wages. Apprenticeships are also very important to me. The concerns about the location of the green space, I share those. And I think that the land swap is a good idea and should be thought through with staff. There isn't enough east-west access, so I'd like to see the buildings broken up a bit more. If you could remind me, Joe, how many three bedrooms and how many four bedrooms did you have?
Right now, we have greater than 10%, or 10% three bedrooms.
Three bedrooms. Do you have any four bedrooms, or no? I can't, I thought maybe?
Haven't, in fact, haven't.
Haven't thought about that?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. But I am glad to see that we have more three bedrooms. To me, this would be a very nice place to live with your family, to have this much kind of green space, to access, to have the bike amenities close by, to have your shopping needs that are walkable, to potentially, and hopefully, have that bridge going from the end of 53rd Street. I am glad to see that you're including the family-friendly units. But I want to also emphasize that those need to be, there needs to be some affordability built into the three-bedroom units as well. I think that the, what you've done here with the diverter on Horton Street is good, that we need to calm the traffic on Horton Street. And, you know, people are biking more and more, and they need this kind of commuter-throughway through our town. Right now, people are using San Pablo Avenue, which is not, yeah, not a great street to cycle on. And I would like to see Horton Street preserved as a bicycle boulevard. And I want to see it thought of as kind of a main bicycle commuter corridor within our I'm also interested in the ownership units, the mix of ownership units. I understand that maybe the condo market hasn't picked up the same kind of steam that the rental market has. But I think for the future of our city, that it's, that people want to live and remain in Emeryville, and that increasingly, they're being priced out by the escalating rental costs, and that we could really use some more ownership housing in town. So, that's also important to me. In terms of small businesses, I'd like to see, if it were possible, some co-ops or worker-owned businesses within the site, because I would like us to get away from the low-wage retail jobs. We have plenty of those, even within and proximate to this neighborhood. So, that's something I'd like you to think about as well. I do want to thank you for the many meetings that you've conducted, and your openness, your willingness to talk and be available. And like I said, I think that there's a great deal of interest in this development and this parcel right now, that there's, the community has a lot of kind of hopes around what this is going to look like and be, not just for the neighborhood, but for the entire city. So, I want to thank you for reaching out to the public so much. And I hope that you do have that community meeting as you move forward as well.
Okay, I guess I go last. And first thing I have to say, I think in the long run, this is going to be a great parcel, great development for both you and for the city. But something that can make it really better is a win-win for both of us, and that's the bridge across the railroad tracks. I think that's very important. I also believe, and we have to do everything possible to keep people out of their cars in this one, so I would also go along with Jennifer as far as restricting or looking at the parking requirements for this job. I believe Parcel C is, needs to be staggered or something, has to be done there. It just, it looks too big, because I agree with Ruth as far as the wind. But something else I also believe is that this project is only two blocks from Oakland. So, we have to, I keep saying, if Emeryville's going to get better, we have to help Oakland get better. So, I mean, a lot of these jobs, there's a Mandela Training Center in West Oakland, where there's a lot of youth looking for jobs. So, I mean, I think it comes hand-in-hand. If we can use work, you know, get youth to work on projects like this, bring them into the trades, we start improving our area, which improves West Oakland. And so, I mean, the viability of this project really is on the safety of all those residents and making sure that that corridor that we don't control in Oakland is a safe corridor. Because I see this project, to me, as the transformation of Emeryville by people that are outpriced in San Francisco. The selling point for you is going to be that they can move to Emeryville, they can be at work quicker, living in Emeryville than working, living in San Francisco, and they can save some money. So, those people that are moving here are first wave, I'm going to say, are going to be young, they're going to be on bicycles, they're going to be used to transportation, public transportation. So, I think it benefits both of us if we work towards that direction as far as those, meeting those needs for those people, and also working as far as the requirements to stabilize the people that will be moving there and staying there, and so that they have some affordable housing, and they also have some housing that's large enough to raise their families in. But I'm excited about this. And I, too, want to thank you for all that you're putting into this project. It's been a long 10 years for you. You've listened very closely to the residents of Emeryville. And I just want to make sure that Charlie Bryant, are you happy with what you've heard tonight? Or is there anything specific that you're looking for?
You have direction now, Charlie?
I'm not the one that has to approve this project.
Well, Charlie gave us like six or seven items, and, you know, I don't know where we go from here.
Oh, you mean, do we have direction?
Receive enough direction.
That's what I mean. Yes. Yes, we're happy that we have direction.
You have definable direction. Okay, with that, I'm going to end this meeting. Thank you very much. And I think some people are going to be leaving, and some people are going to be coming in, or...
Let's give a minute for the kind of changeover here.
Yeah, let's have a couple minutes of changing of the guard.
If you don't mind, I have just a quick, if you could give me a couple minutes, I have something to say, and I know there are a bunch of people who are leaving. So, could I take this opportunity?
Sure.
Thank you. Because I know some people were here just for the Sherwin-Williams project, and others are here for the Emery Go Round, which we'll be considering soon after we elect our new mayor this evening. This is just a brief reflection from me. This, tonight marks four years since I began serving on the City Council. And I get an extra year, which is kind of complicated for those of you who don't know. But we've changed our election cycle so that both Kurt and I will be, our terms will end a year from now. And I just wanted to announce to the community that I am not going to be seeking a reelection in one year. And it's because of my own, you know, personal commitments, et cetera. But I have so greatly enjoyed serving, and I have a fifth year, which is a real blessing and a bonus. And, but I have a family, I have a career. It's just a lot to serve your community in this way. So, I would just wanted to put that out there, mostly because I want the community to know that there's an opportunity to run for City Council. And I want as many people as possible to consider that. As much as I say it's a hard thing to do with balancing family and career, I think it's a wonderful opportunity, and it's a great way, in Emeryville, our little urban village, you can really make a huge difference. So, I've accomplished a lot, I know. I mean, I'm not leaving, so it's another year. But I'm just announcing this. We have a fabulous new city manager. We have public participation and transparency. We've got focus on family-friendly. This project, I think, has many of those important quality-of-life issues. And key for me now, especially with my work, is transportation improvements in town. So, you'll hear more of that from me over the next year. But I'm excited about our new, our changing of the guard again this evening, if you can stick around for that. I think that is a good show. And I just want to put out there again, I'm actively seeking people who are interested in considering being on the City Council, and I would be happy to spend time and talk with folks, and perhaps support you as well in that endeavor. So, I also want to mention Scott Donahue, who spoke earlier, is someone who has expressed interest in running for City Council. I think that's wonderful, and hope that I will get a chance to talk with others about that, and him as well. So, thank you.
Well, thank you for your four years, Jennifer. It's been a lot of fun. And you worked very hard, and you made a better, thank you very much.
Yeah, my final comment is, you could either pay your City Council members more or ask less of them. That's all. I feel like it's a, it's a very, it's a glamorous position, and it's tough at times, and it takes a lot of dedication. And I've wanted to do it well, and so, it's not worth it to me to do a half-job. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to give a couple more minutes for you guys to switch around. If you want to switch, you don't have to.
You can stay.
You can stay for the whole meeting.
Stand and stretch.
Jumping jacks?
I'm getting ready to relocate. Where do you want to go?
Switching to the guard on your...
That's what I'm doing.
On your birthday.
I'm fine with my spot.
Ooh, packed house.
Hey, Jack. Are you still okay? Hey, good to see you.
Yeah, I made a note of that, but I just know, he's here, because if it's not, I don't want to make people...
Right? Yeah. Absolutely.
Because I can hear you. Because I can hear you.
I appreciate everybody being here, but I think we want to leave at a regular early time. But anyway, this is a special meeting, and this is where we decide who our next mayor is going to be. And since we're all here, I will take public comments. Go on once. Go on twice.
He is.
Okay. Okay, we're looking for a motion on the appointment of the mayor and vice mayor for the coming one-year term.
I move Jack Asher for mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
I take it that's consensus here?
Call the roll.
Well, we will call the roll. Karen?
Councilmember Atkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember West.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jack Asher.
Aye.
And Mayor Brickman.
Definitely yes. Okay, now we're looking for a vice mayor. Is there anybody who would like to be a vice mayor sitting up here?
No more pay. No more pay, no.
There's no more pay for mayor either. I would move Ruth Atkins to be vice mayor.
Would you? Is there a second to that?
I would second that.
Let's call the roll on that one. You might be surprised.
And that was Councilmember West and Asher. Okay. Councilmember Atkins.
Okay.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember West.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Asher.
Aye.
And Mayor Brickman.
Aye. And with that, I will say my goodbyes. It's been, it's been one year. I'm gonna move right now, so I'll be back.
We have to do the oath. We have to be sworn in, yeah.
Okay, so the next part is the actual swearing-in of the new mayor and vice mayor.
You guys are gonna go down there.
So I also have...
This is mine.
Yeah, that's yours. I'm gonna put mine in this stack.
This is mine. This is mine. That's yours?
Yours, first.
Yep, it's mine.
Okay, you got it?
Oh, very cute, very cute.
You printed five? No.
Yeah.
Jack, do you want your children up here when you take the oath? Why not?
I guess. Come on up here, baby. Brother, you wanna come up? Wanna come up? All right. Come on, baby. Yay. Can you just stand by my mouth?
You guys are thrilled to be here, aren't you?
Always. We love a good meeting.
This is a good one.
Yes, dear.
There should be a plastic one in that room. Okay.
It is my Reese's Peanut Butter Cup, yes. You can have, yeah. Don't eat it right now. I'm gonna wait.
So rather than me reciting and you following along, repeating after me, you both have a copy of the Oath of Allegiance for Public Office and Employees of the State of California. So in your new roles of mayor and vice mayor, if you can, when I count to three, say it in unison, put your name where it says "I" would be either Jack Asher or Ruth Atkins. And then if you can sign it, and I will have it part of the record. So you can either swear or affirm your choice. So, "I..."
I, Ruth Atkins, solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion. That I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, Mayor Asher and Vice Mayor Atkins.
Thank you.
I want to take a moment, Mayor, to thank Kurt for his service as mayor this year. This has been a challenging year in many ways, and I know that when you serve as mayor, you're called to lots of extra meetings and places and that you have to be, and you've served the city well, and I want to thank you for that extra...
I appreciate it.
...service.
Yeah, thank you, Kurt.
I would like to echo that as well.
Yeah. Thank you.
It's my pleasure, especially the Bay Street Christmas lighting. That was a lot of fun.
Okay, so is, do I now need to close the special meeting?
Yep.
Yep. Meeting's now closed. We move on to a very short meeting. This is the Blue Agenda. The City Council of the City of Emeryville is successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency's regular meeting. I will call the meeting to order. Roll call, we're all still here, and let's go ahead and do the pledge. Okay? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now we're on to public comments for items not on this agenda. Any comment at this time? No? Okay.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ken. Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Ken Bukowski, former council member. Just to want to let folks know that all of these meetings, the City Council meetings, planning commission meetings, school board meetings are now available on YouTube and divided by subjects. So now you can go to YouTube and find the particular subject you want to look at from planning commission meetings, and I'm also posting meetings from 20 years ago, which are really interesting. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Okay, no other public comments? Okay? Not right now for the...
Move the consent calendar.
Second. Okay. Consensus on that?
Yep.
Okay. Onto item number four, the status report on oversight board legal expenditures. There haven't been any, right? Since, okay, number five. And with that...
Well, no, our next meeting is February 11th.
February 11th.
Unless, and we probably have to look at who's gonna be the chair of that next meeting.
Right, exactly. Okay. And with that, I'll adjourn the successor agency meeting. Okay, we're now moving on to the Green Agenda, right? This is the agenda for the Emeryville City Council Regular Meeting. Calling the meeting to order. We already know that we're all here. We've done the pledge. There are no special orders of the day. Now is the time for public comment for items not on this agenda. If you're here for the Emery Go-Round, we'll let you know when it's time to comment on the Emery Go-Round.
Just move that up.
We will.
It'll be soon.
Yeah. And do we have the City Manager's Report?
Just very briefly, I just want to invite everyone. We are having our annual tree light, holiday tree lighting parade in winter wonderland this Friday from 5:00 to 7:00. We'll start at 5:00 o'clock right here at City Hall, and it is a free event. We'll have a parade that goes down to the plaza and a festival that'll go for a couple hours after that. So please come out.
Okay. All right, thank you, Sabrina. There are two items that I wanted to move up on the agenda. The first is what I've been told is a very short, five-minute presentation, so it's item 10.2.1, the consideration to contribute to the Aya Nakano Reward Fund. So after the consent calendar, I'd like us to turn to that. And then I've also been asked to move up the discussion of the Emery Go-Round.
Yeah.
Right? Item 8.1.
Move the consent calendar.
I'd just like to pull item number 5.5, since I found something at my desk here. You see me?
And I want to make a comment on 5.6.
Okay. Sorry, wait a minute. 5.6 was... Was Ruth, and Curtis 5.5.
Okay, for 5.5, I guess Maurice is my gift tonight, a going-away gift.
Excuse me. I'm sorry. Do we have a second on the consent calendar, other than that? I had Councilmember Davis as moving.
I'm happy to second it.
Second on it. Thank you.
Okay, ready?
Any, are we voting on the consent?
No. We just, sorry. Have to vote on the consent.
What were you saying, Mike?
Are you going to vote on the consent calendar?
Vote on the consent calendar.
We all...
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Maurice, 5.5. I found this on my desk. You want to explain? This is the change order request.
Yeah, I thought you would be interested to see a sample of the steam piping system at the Emeryville Senior Center. We had a leak late last week that we repaired, and we got a sample of the pipe, so you could understand what we're in for.
Thank you.
Oh, my goodness.
And with that, I would move 5.5.
Okay. Second. Okay.
I would just like to say I also support 5.5. I think it's necessary to make these rehabilitations for the senior center, but I'm a little discouraged with how piecemeal it's been and how it's been hard to kind of track how large a project this is. I think that's what happens with older buildings, is you look at one thing, and then it turns into another and another. And so, and I know we'll be discussing it as part of our SIP discussion, which is our capital improvement program in early 2014, but it's just, it seems to have, what, it's 10x, I think, what it was originally, this contract, so I'm concerned about that.
Okay.
My comment on 5.6...
Should we, should we make, we have a motion, a second on 5.5?
Did we have a second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Onto 5.6, Ruth.
I'm really delighted to see this project move forward. This is the Joseph Emery Park Skate Spot, that, and the items here are to enter into an agreement with the artist for public art that will be skateable, which makes it rather unique, and other design and construction services. I also want to make note that we got apparently a very, a grant from a foundation that supports youth by funding skate parks that is apparently a very competitive grant to get, so they recognize the uniqueness. And for all those who don't know, this skate park is gonna be along the, behind the promenade where Arizmendi and CVS are. It's the Linear Park along the edge of the Pixar campus. And so I can't wait to see it actually start to happen. I think that'll, it'll be a great amenity and a very needed improvement in this town. So with that, I'll move that.
Second. All those in favor?
I have a, I have a quick comment before we vote, if you, if you don't mind. I agree with the intentions, and I am grateful to incorporate public, or art, public art in the project that we can skate on as well, if I could ever learn to ride a skateboard, and I'll work on it. And the grant that we received, I am concerned, though, about how the cost of the project, it goes beyond what we originally thought that we're, we funded a portion of the project with Measure WW funds in the park, and with the public input, it seems that the project has become kind of more deluxe than we originally thought. And I know we discussed it in April and gave a nod towards continuing, but now it's going to be in our SIP discussion because we don't have enough funds to build the park as it's designed. So I'm concerned, I think, you know, spending $300,000 on a skate park seemed good enough, and now it's more than that, and I'm concerned about where that money is gonna come from and what else will not happen due to that. So I'm just voicing those concerns now. I know it'll be part of our discussion later on with the SIP projects.
Okay, I have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Now we're going to turn to item 10.2.1, moving that up, consideration to contribute to the Aya Nakano Reward Fund. And I believe we have a, someone here to talk to us about this?
Is a detective here? Yes. Thank you for coming. I appreciate it.
I'm Detective Malina, I'm from the Oakland Police Department. I have the unfortunate case of Aya Nakano. He was 22-years-old on June 12th of this year. He was playing basketball up at UC Berkeley, and he's an Emeryville resident, so he was driving home, and I believe he was rear-ended from behind in a slight offender, but then he pulled over just to do the right thing, and he was shot in Oakland and killed. So the investigation is kind of stalled out, and I'm asking the governor for some reward money. I'm gonna ask you guys for some reward money, and that only comes forward upon conviction. So I need some help on this. His mother has funded the billboard campaign, I don't know if you've seen it, and she plans on doing it again. And a lot of times, that will just spark that tip that will come in and help us get to the bottom of the case. Just so you know about him, I learned about him. He's a recent graduate from college. I didn't find this, none of this is his fault. He didn't do anything wrong. As a matter of fact, he did the right thing. Could have been any one of us just pulled over. Do you have any questions about his case or anything?
No, I just have something to comment, I'd like to make. You know, I, this is important, I feel, for me and for this community, because we really need to help Oakland on this one. I meant, with two blocks away, it would have been, this would have happened in Emeryville. And this person that perpetrated this crime is still out there on the streets, and there's, there's really a belief that you can't snitch. Well, everybody has their price, and so the family believes that around $100,000 is what it takes, a commitment to have somebody snitch on this murderer. And so this commitment is nothing that's gonna come out of this budget until the person is found and convicted. But we all have to remember, we drive through Oakland all the time, they don't have the resources that we're lucky enough to have. So if Emeryville's gonna stay safe, we have to help Oakland with their problems. And I think this small token, commitment of $10,000 if convicted, is something that we really should do to help our, really, our brothers in Oakland. So I would like to have the support of the council for this, and this would be a small way to build up those dollars so that we can get this man off the street, so.
Jennifer?
I do have a question for you, and thank you for coming to speak with us this evening. I, I'm just not familiar with how effective these rewards are, and if you've seen other cases move along or get solved with this type of monetary commitment.
Absolutely. It could be anything. It could be, there's more than one person that knows about this. So I'm hoping that the right amount of money will trigger the right information. So absolutely, will it, could it work? Yes. Has it worked in the past? Yes.
Other questions?
So I guess I'm gonna put forward the motion for the City of Emeryville to put up a $10,000 commitment, commitment on the conviction of the person of, of this, of this killer, of this young man. So, that's my motion.
I'm gonna second that. It's a dollar per person who lives in Emeryville. It's a lot of money in terms of our taxpayers, but on the other hand, I share your concern.
I appreciate that immensely.
All those in favor? Should we take a roll call vote?
Why don't you go roll call?
Let's do a roll call vote. Karen?
Councilmember Atkins?
Aye.
After, okay, councilmem, wait a minute. Councilmember Brickman?
Yeah, right.
Aye.
Councilmember West?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Atkins?
We missed Davis. Wait, what about, what about Nora?
Wait, wait a minute. Let me try, I didn't write this down, that was my fault. Okay, so let me try this again. Okay, Councilmember Davis, sorry, Councilmember Brickman?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember West?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Atkins?
Aye.
And Mayor Asher?
Aye.
I want to thank the council immensely for this one. It means a lot to me. Thank you very much.
And thank you for coming this evening.
Thanks for your pledge.
Okay. Now, we've had a request to move up...
I think that we have a speaker on this one.
Oh, yes. Please come forward.
I just, did you pull the microphone down a little so we can hear you? Yes, thank you. I'm Aya Nakano's mother, as you very well know. I, I just wanted to say a few words, and it's very easy to fall into despair when you lose your greatest love, your greatest blessing. But we find comfort in the kindness and compassion of people like yourselves, solace in the fact that communities will band together to give Aya the justice that he deserves. It is our sincerest hope, through Emeryville's generosity, a message will be sent about gun violence, that violence is no longer confined to a small area of a neighboring city, this much we know, but that beyond the reward money is a message that communities like Emeryville will not acquiesce to senseless violence and allow it to become part of the city's unique social landscape, but simply would not do. So I thank you, councilmembers and Emeryville citizens, for this very generous gift. Thank you for your time, and thank you for letting me speak, and our sincerest gratitude to you from our entire family. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I want to thank you for sharing all the information about your son that you, that you gave to us as well. Precious.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll turn to administrative item 8.1. This is the discussion regarding the Emery Go-Round Shuttle and the Citywide Property-Based Business Improvement District. Karen will have a presentation, and then after that, we'll have time for public comment.
Okay. Get rid of this one. Uh-oh. There we go. Great. So say, council, tonight will, will be a really kind of information item in most ways around the Emery Go-Round Shuttle. We are gonna be asking for some direction regarding potential funding options in the future, but mostly this is an information item. I know that there's been a lot of community interest in this subject, and that the level of information is, you know, has not been consistent. Some are new to this issue, some of them are familiar with this issue. So a lot of what the goal is tonight is to give kind of everyone the same basis of information, so some of this is information that you may have heard from before. So basically, the presentation, the overview, is to give some background on the Emery Go-Round's history, the, including the origins of the Emery Go-Round, the origins of the Transportation Management Association that now operates and administers the Emery Go-Round, the Property-Based Business Improvement District, which is the primary funding mechanism of the Emery Go-Round at this point, include, in governance regarding the Emery Go-Round Shuttle today. We'll also talk briefly about current Emeryville operations, the current budget, ridership demand issues, and what I know is near and dear to the hearts of many here tonight, the Powell Street Shuttle stops, including the one near Watergate. And then there will be a brief overview of the fact that the main fucking funding mechanism for the Emery Go-Round is up for renewal in 2006, and there have been some issues raised around this renewal, 2016, sorry, 2016. And some of the funding options that the city might want to consider to either supplement or replace the current funding strategies. And then there's a few long-term issues that we will not go over in a lot of depth. You've seen them before, we won't be really asking for direction on this, but because it's gonna be an introduction for some of the people here today, to briefly talk a little bit about some of the long-term issues, such as the bus yard and the EBOT study, which is the Emeryville West Berkeley/West Oakland Transportation Transit Study.
It is hard to hear you, Karen.
Oh, okay. My name is Karen Hampel, and I'm Assistant to the City Manager. I am the City Liaison with the Emeryville Transportation Management Association that operates the Emery Go-Round Shuttle. And I actually was the staff person who helped establish the shuttle way back in 1994. So some background to the shuttle.
Talk closer to the mic. It's hard to hear you, Karen.
Okay, yes, I have to, okay, come right up to the mic. That's what I always tell other people, right? That's what I tell everyone else. And, yeah. And, yeah. Okay, so, some background to the Emeryville Shuttle. The shuttle was established in 1994 after some discussion amongst city staff and with some of the business community. There had been actually an attempt to start a shuttle a few years before that, but that didn't go off the ground. And the situation was, is that the city had quite a few independent private shuttles, such as the former Watergate Towers, which is now partially the Towers. I believe the, I think Waram Development had a shuttle and so did the, then called the, the Martin Group, which is now not so much in the city anymore. And so, there were several independent shuttles. And at this point, it was just at the beginning of Emeryville's economic development and there was this understanding that there needed to be some type of alternative transportation for the city, that you really couldn't build your way in terms of enough streets or enough parking in order to transform Emeryville from being kind of an industrial town to more of a high-tech, regional retail city. And so, the city had started to request some mitigation from some projects. Of course, this was very early in Emeryville's development, there weren't that many projects that were being, mitigation was being asked of, but this was something that the city was beginning to do. And at the same time, this was around the time that AC Transit experienced what seems to be a cyclical wave of budget cuts due to a loss of revenue. They don't have their own independent strand of funding such as BART. So, this is kind of the background in which the Emmerige Round was started. The city believing that it was best to have one citywide shuttle rather than perhaps requiring a lot of small independent shuttles that would add to the independent shuttles that were already in, in the city. So, there was an agreement by about eight developers, major employers and property owners with the city, to fund the project for a three-year pilot with the thought that if after the first year that there wasn't at least forty percent more ridership than the independent shuttles that were already in existence, then the, the, the pilot would stop then. That was broken the first week of the shuttle. So, ridership demand has always been an issue with this system. You build it and they will come. The, the first three, at first, the private sector funding was less than fifty percent of the shuttle cost. And the city had an expectation that the shuttle would be a hundred percent privately funded and that there would be a nonprofit Transportation Management Association established within three years in order to completely take over the operation and funding of the shuttle. So, the first three years, it was a participation agreement specifying members' contributions, minimal service letters, routes and governance. The city administered it. I was the staff who actually worked on developing the contract for the, for the vendor. And it was run and operated, I was administered and run by the city for the first three years. At the end of three years, the private sector funding had grown from forty percent in the first year to ninety percent in year three. So, pretty successful in terms of what the goal was at the time. In 1997, the TMA, the Emeryville Transportation Management Association, was established as a nonprofit organization with the assistance of a grant from Caltrans and assumed the operations of the Emmerige Round Shuttle. During this period, from about 97 to 2001, the TMA membership expanded to seventeen financial contributors. It was a mixture of developer agreements and conditions of approval, as well as still some voluntary contributions. And I would say it was probably, still, a lot of it was voluntary contributions. The TMA board consisted of all the members, all seventeen members, and was institutionalized among themselves through a membership participation agreement. There was minimal city financial contribution at this, at this time. And that there was a city-appointed liaison to the board, which was myself, with no voting rights. And during this period, we began seeing a huge spike in ridership and capacity demand as, as this, as the, it was, the ridership demand continued to grow, partly because of new development and partly because it was there and it was very convenient and it was free to riders. So, in 2001, by then, there was a, the city and the Transportation Management Association recognized that the increasing ridership demand had potentially outpaced the ability for the current funding strategy to cover the cost of operation. And so, the TMA and the city reviewed funding options. And the business community became very interested in a Property-Based Business Improvement District, which is a assessment district that is formed under state law. And there's very specific steps on how it has to be. The, it is only, it's an assessment district for only commercial property owners. The business community petitions the city in order to establish this assessment district, which is a way of assessing fees on commercial property owners. And as part of that, of that process, there's a management plan that is, that is approved or really ratified by the property owners, which includes the assessment levy formula as well as the types of services and projects that are going to be funded through this assessment district. Generally speaking, these kinds of districts are more kind of downtown merchant association kind of assessment districts where there is no security patrols, more lighting and banners. To my knowledge, this is the first one that was done to fund a citywide transportation project to, a shuttle. So, the assessment levy at, at first was seventeen, about seventeen cents a square foot for office and retail space with commercial, industrial owners paying half of that and, or eight point five cents per structural square feet. At this time, residential use properties, all properties in residentially zoned areas were exempted by law. The management plan that was ratified by the commercial property owners also exempted commercial properties that were more than one thousand feet from the shuttle route. That's the route, not a stop. And the TMA board membership, once the Improvement District was formed, was established as being the seven top P-Bid assessed commercial property owners, as well as initially a Chamber of Commerce representative. That's changed slightly, which we'll get to the next slide. Under a, a P-Bid, the, the activities and services that are funded by the P-Bid are set by those that are assessed through their associate, their, what's called an owner's association, which is again, part of P-Bid law. And so, the idea is that those that are assessed have the decision-making opportu, are the, are the primary decision-makers in setting services, fees, budget, and as you'll see that there is relatively small role for the city. So, for those developers that did have conditions of approval or developer agreements, the city agreed that for as long as the P-Bid was in place, that funding, contributing to the P-Bid satisfied their, their, their agreement obligations. There are still a few properties that contribute to the Emmerige Round outside of conditions of approval, rather, through conditions of approval that don't feed into the P-Bid. And those are some new housing complexes that the city has required, as well as there's some parcels in Oakland that are part of the Joint Powers Agreement for the East Bay Shopping Center. So, for example, Target is in Oakland, so they can't be assessed in an Emeryville Assessment District, but they pay the same rate through their condition of approval. So, to give you a sense of the current Emmerige Round organization, so there, so the Emeryville, there's the Emeryville Transportation Board of Directors. Under them, Gray Boeing Associates is a transportation services company, management consulting firm, that on behalf of the Board of Directors manages and administers the Emmerige Round Shuttle. And the shuttle itself is operated by MV Transportation, which is a new operator from, of this year. And the city gives general oversight. So, to get a little bit more specific about how governments work, governance works now that it's a Property-Based Business Improvement District, is that, again, just to clarify that the Emmerige Round really isn't a city service. In fact, when you're establishing a P-Bid, part of what is in the engineer's report that sets out why the Assessment District is coming into being, is that it, it cannot be services that the city is already providing. It has to be an above and beyond what a city service would be. So, getting back to that first, that, that first example, the business district that wants additional security patrol or sidewalks steaming or more frequent street cleaning that the city offers. And so, this is again, a city, a, a service that the city did not offer, which was the Emmerige Round Shuttle. So, the TMA is the owner's representative, as outlined in P-Bid law. And the three major, I would say, authority, where the authority rests are either in the P-Bid law itself, in the management plan that was ratified by the property owners that pay into the assessment and approved by the city council, and in the TMA bylaws, which govern how they internally operate. For example, how the board is elected, those are all part of the internal bylaws of the TMA. That's not a, something that the city has any say over, though we can certainly give our opinion, or this, or the opinion can certainly be made. The TMA also, the TMA board also determines the shuttle service levels, routes and stops, develops the annual budget and makes recommendations on what the assessment levy should be every year based upon that budget. The city, under the law, the state law that brings P-Bids into being, gives the city really just general oversight responsibilities. It's kind of, you know, we're making sure that, that the assessment levy is warranted based upon the budget that they recommend. The city really has, though I said general, has really limited authority. P-Bid law states that the city shall contract with the TMA as the owner's representative for any of the services. It's not a may, it's not a, a will, it's a shall, which is pretty forceful in law, for those of you with some legal language experience. And it also, while the city approves the overall annual TMA budget and the annual levy, the city only has the authority to approve a less, a smaller levy, not a higher levy. And it also, if, the money cannot be used for anything else other than the services that were in the management plan. And nor can the city end the P-Bid, only those that essentially voted into being the commercial property owners itself. So, it said the city's authority in the P-Bid is, is, is very small. It's really just, the council's authority is really just general oversight. So, to give you a little sense of the, the current levy and operating budget, is, to give you a sense that it's about a hundred and twenty-eight dollars per, sorry, it's about two hundred, twenty-five point six cents per square foot for office retail, half about that for an industrial warehouse. With the new P-Bid that started in 2006, rental residential units are also assessed and that's a hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy cents. The total estimated revenue for service year fourteen coming up was a little over two point seven million, which is actually a budget that is, that the, the proposed expenditures are a little higher than the revenue that's coming in through the P-Bid revenue and the, the other sources. And that was what, and so, if that money is not made up some other way, the TMA would revise their budget to meet their revenue. Oftentimes, they have savings, so this is not that unusual. And then, also in January, February of this year, the TMA plans to review the budget, one, to see if things need to be altered because of the, the deficit that you see there. Or also, there's been a call to really have a budget that, that looks at ridership demand and, you know, maybe a budget that, while it may not be sustainable through the current revenue, is the budget that the board might say is what is needed to meet ridership demand. So, just to give you a little sense of the, kind of how the money flows into or who pays for the service. If you notice that almost eighty percent of who pays into the P-Bid are retail office parcels. There is relatively a small amount by industrial warehouse, a little bit over ten percent. A very small, that are assessed outside of the P-Bid. For example, if you look at the residential parcels that are through conditions of approval, it's a per-unit, per-year basis of a hundred and twenty-seven dollars. So, even, you know, a fairly large complex does not pay that much a year. So, that is a overall fairly small part of the total amount that pays for the shuttle. And that the city contributes not even fifty, under fifty thousand. And this really represents that the city is paid as a, a property owner. And under P-Bid law, neither public agencies or nonprofits are exempted from the P-Bid, though in Emeryville, other than the city, there has not been payment by other public agencies. Most notably, the school district and the US Post Office. With AC Transit not paying into the P-Bid, but they do provide it, they provide some in-kind services as the Emmerige Round is able to fuel up at their diesel pumps. I mean, they get charged for it, but it's still at a subsidized rate. So, for the past few years, costs have exceeded revenues, primarily due to increases in fuel cost, maintenance costs, there's an aging fleet. And while the revenue generated by the P-Bid has more or less kept up with operational costs, there is the cost that every time that you expand ridership, you need more buses or rolling stock capital. And there, there is now, because of that, a need to add buses as well as drivers to meet ridership demand right now. For those of you who ride it regularly, even sometimes, the budget, the, the buses are fairly much at capacity at this point, particularly during key commute hours. And in fact, during the presentation in July, when the Assessment District levy was being requested for the next year, the TMA also requested that the city provide some funds to meet the escalating operational costs and ridership demand. And the staff did not recommend that the city do that at this time, but city council agreed to consider it as part of looking toward the future. Just to give you some sense of, of how the revenue and cost history, and this is a slide furnished by the TMA that was provided at a study session in, in May of this, of this year. And you see kind of a jump up in this area and that was when the P-Bid was renewed. And you can see that by 2012, expenditures are slightly over revenue. And the TMA either through operational savings where it can, you know, is still able to, to maintain, cover those expenses, or in some years have dipped into their cash flow revenue reserve, which right now is at about half a million dollars. Which for a service of this type is not a whole lot of money in terms of, particularly when the way the money flows from the county to the city and to the TMA, that's the money that they have for that cash flow. This is just an idea of where the buses go now and the different stops that there are. The TMA will be reviewing the shuttle stops and the routes and the service levels in early of 2014, one, to see if there's a way that they can squeeze out some efficiencies to be able to provide more service for the ridership capacity issues that they're experiencing. And also, there have been some members of the TMA who would like the board to review the, how the routes and the stops maximize and provide equity for those that pay into, that are contributors to the system financially. So, as all of you who, who know, that, that as part of this discussion, something that's brought a lot of the community here, I'm sure, is that the stop near the Watergate condominiums was taken off rot, route at the onset of the city's sidewalk construction project. And it has now been temporarily reinstated by the TMA in response to a city and community request. The TMA, as I mentioned before, will be doing analysis of ridership demand, route stops and schedules. There, I think they just started this actually. And they plan to have recommendations to the TMA board. to the TMA board in early 2014. The P-Bid is scheduled to be renewed in the next few years. It sunsets in fiscal year 2015, 2016, which would be the last year of funded service, would be 2016 unless the P-Bid is renewed and/or alternative or supplemental funding is found. The P-Bid requires a Prop 218 process in which the, those that are assessed get a chance to approve the management plan and the assessment formula that will be used during the lifetime of the next P-Bid, which would be from, that would then be from 2016 to 2026. And a P-Bid can only be levied on parcels that have a special benefit from the service being funded through the assessment. And supplemental funding may be need for either general community benefit, or for benefit that would be deemed to be above and beyond the benefit derived from the contributions of those assessed. So staff recommends that the city would work with the TMA to consider going through a renewal process for the P-Bid in 2015, to give ample time before the sunsetting of the service in 15, 16. So in addition, there are some funding options that have been thought about, either short time because of the ridership capacity issues that the service is now experiencing, as well as long-term concerns around just the ability for the current model to either adequately fund all the ridership demand that may come in the next 10 years, or the need to look at some of the limitations of that type of funding mechanism. So some of the things that were, that staff has considered, and this is not an exhaustive list, there could be some others, and I divided these into kind of two types of funding options, one that would just require a city council approval, and those that would require either a Prop 218, which is those that are being assessed, or voter approval. So for the city, one would be, of course, transportation grants, I think particularly for some of the capital needs of the Emery Ground. There are shuttle services in the area that have gotten funding, particularly for rolling stock for buses, from the Air District or from other funding sources. There's also the possibility for the city to contract through, using general funds for supplemental service. This is something that actually the city does for the Eight to Go service, which is a special period transit service, that's a dial-a-ride service that you can reserve. And it would, it could be possible for the city to contract other supplemental service that would provide service distinct from that which is being provided through the P-Bid itself. There's also the possibility of the city council deciding to just put general fund money for general operations, this is kind of just general kind of ridership capacity, meaning that, capital for buses. And also, as we'll see very briefly later, the TMA is also looking for a long-term or permanent bus yard, and they don't have the ability to do that on their own. As I said, they only have about half a million dollars of cash reserve, and really that is, I would call, operating cash flow, as opposed to a reserve that there's a lot of room for, particularly, they do have the lease, they do, of course, lease their current space, but, you know, if there was need for site improvements or that type of thing, they don't have the money for that at this point. The city could also, so voter-approved or Prop 218 is P-Bid renewal, and that process would include a new management plan, an engineer's report that would look at this issue of special versus general benefit that had been raised by some members of the TMA, and would, and that would be the document that would be voted upon or ratified by the property owners before it would go to the council for approval. There's also the possibility of a voter-approved city parcel tax and a voter-approved sales tax. So it would be helpful, perhaps at the end of this presentation and after, I'm sure the community will have some things to say, is that this, as I said, is mostly an information study, a report, but if there's any of these funding options that are either ruled out or the council might be particularly interested in staff pursuing, you know, we can come back with some additional information. So for example, if there was interest in general funds for general operations, at this point, there's not a specific proposal after, other than what the request was from the TMA in July. So we could do more around that. If there was interest in the P-Bid renewal, or some of these other voter-approved taxes, then staff could do some, you know, more work to get some specific information about what that might look like and what a timeline would be for any of those, and if there's an interest in supplemental service. So that would be helpful, so staff can prioritize those funding options that the city council is most interested in. If there is anything that requires voter approval, it has to be put in front of a ballot at the same time that there is a member of, that there's a council seat up for election. So that would have to happen in 2014. I suppose it could happen in 2016, but that would be cutting it a little thin. And so, and then staff would suggest that if the P-Bid renewal is followed through, which I've not heard that that would not be a process to go through, that happened in 2015. So there's kind of an opportunity, depending on how a P-Bid renewal and/or any other kinds of funding mechanisms that might require some voter votes, that there's a couple of years to be able to do that, as opposed to just kind of, you know, doing it all at the last minute with no options. Just very briefly, a couple of the other issues facing the Emery Ground is the need for a long-term bus yard. The current bus yard lease agreement has been extended through 2018, so that's good news. However, there is a six-month termination clause, so even though it's extended for, through 2018, if the current bus yard, if the owner of the current bus yard had a alternative use for that site, there's just a six-month termination clause. Some of the concerns around a long-term bus roads are operational constraints. You know, if you had, for example, a bus yard in Richmond, that would substantially increase cost, and of course, the funding constraints of there being somewhat limited resources other than the lease revenue that the TMA holds that are just based upon the TMA and funded through the current P-Bid. So the last time we spoke about the bus yard, these were the options that council was most interested in. One would be maintaining the current bus yard site on 67th Street, behind the old Beauchamp Building on the Berkeley-Emeryville border. One is the I-580 underpass by Mandela Parkway, which is situated in Oakland, and there's not been a lot of support for Oakland to date for that particular site, but I understand we have a new city manager who has some, maybe some connections in Oakland? So we'll see. Yes. And then there's the I-580 underpass off of San Pablo Avenue, and a potential alternative site, but again, given the restraints, operational constraints, there's not a whole lot of sites that would work. Lacoste Avenue had been an option, but city council at the time had kind of ruled that out. And lastly, there is a long-range strategy for alternative transportation in the East Bay Corridor, and the Emeryville-West Berkeley-West Oakland Regional Alternative Transportation Project, or EBOT for short, is a study that's being funded through MTC and led by Emeryville, includes, of course, Berkeley and Oakland as well. And the whole issue of connecting the communities, essentially, I would call the communities west of San Pablo together. This has not historically been an area that's been well-served by transit, given its industrial roots, there really didn't have the density to, for the routes that there were in other parts, but of course, that, the use of this western area is changing. It's now much more high-tech regional retail, and many, many, many more residents than existed there previously. And so there has been interest in looking at what the needs are, and if you look at kind of where the EBOT, the idea is where the connectivity needs to happen, it does follow closely a lot of where the Emery Ground already serves. And the TMA also administers the West Berkeley shuttle that goes to the Ash, that services some of West Berkeley and goes to the Ashby shuttle through a separate contract. So just to get back to really the only thing that staff would respectfully ask some direction on, or if there is some narrowing of these, of these options or any other options that council has, that we can, you know, do a little bit more fleshing out of what these alternatives would be, what timelines would be, and come back to you in probably the first quarter of 2014, with the understanding that anything that would require, if the council is interested in anything that might require voter approval, staff would recommend doing that in November 2014. And so the first quarter would really have to be the time that the council starts thinking about anything that would need to be put on the ballot. If it's something that's a Prop 218 ratification, such as the P-Bid renewal, that does not have to be done at a November election, even year November election, it can be done by mail. So there's a little bit more flexibility when that could occur. So that ends my report.
Okay. Do we want to hear from the public first and comments? Okay.
Karen, may I?
Okay.
May I?
Yes. Yeah.
Good evening. My name's Trudy Presser. I'm the executive director for the Emeryville TMA, and I would like to make some brief remarks, and thank you, Karen, for the background on the association and the Emery Go-Around. My remarks tonight are emphasizing the importance of, one, the success of the Emery Go-Around and the need to keep this important vital transportation system going, given what you've been hearing about, which is our near and long-term funding challenges and
Max and Rich.
That we're facing. The Emery Go-Around has been a great success story, and I think all of us know that. As Karen pointed out with the map, our routes cover the length of the city. We operate every weekday from early morning till late at night, and on the weekends, we run the Chalpal route, known as the shopper route, keeping folks heading around the city, even on the weekends and holidays, to support the local businesses. We serve the majority of the commuters, commuter traffic to and from Emeryville, which significantly helps reduce traffic congestion in the city. Our recent boarding counts indicate that we are carrying approximately 1.6 million riders a year, I think Karen mentioned that. That's approximately 5,600 boardings on average weekday. That roadway system could not handle this traffic if these buses are shut down. We run a very efficient system. Our 2013 operating budget is 2.7 million. If we divide that by 1.6 mile, million riders a year, that's $1.70 per passenger boarding. We accomplished that this year with an extremely aging fleet. Our 2014 preliminary budget that was before you this summer is 2.9 million. If you take that and divide it with just the current estimated ridership of 1.6 million, that's $1.80 per passenger boarding. Our under $2 cost per passenger boarding is way under the average of other Bay Area bus agencies. In fact, in almost all cases, it's less than half. Several agencies are more than three times our cost, and we do this as a free ride. The size of Emeryville and the proximity to Bart and the Amtrak stations makes this an ideal location for this efficient last-mile service. Our success is the envy of many other cities. In my brief term so far as executive director, I know this by the amount of calls we get about the Emery Go-Around. Just a few weeks ago, I know many of you know this, we were even featured on NPR, which was pretty cool. The city, the story illustrated, the city of Emeryville pioneered local businesses coming together with local government to support the system.
Trudy, that's, that's three minutes. We need to hear from the public.
Okay, okay. With that, I'll turn it over to our chair. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Sears, current president of the TMA. I've been on the board for over 15
Well, I'm never gonna hear from the public.
I'm, I'm part of the public.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
He's allowed to have three minutes. Let's go ahead and proceed, please.
If I can use my three minutes, please. So I've been a volunteer on the board for over 15 years. I was president back in 2001 when the PBID first started. My company is the single largest contributor to the system. This year, we've paid in more than $338,000. Now, we could run an excellent private shuttle like Google or someone else with less money than that that serves our campus, but we don't because we believe in the Emery Ground and its benefits. It's been a success story, and it's been working, but it's been under attack the last year, and I hope that you will all listen to this because it's attacking something that I'm sure you value highly. All those buttons tell me you value it highly. But the way we're funded, the PBID, does have lots of arcane but important laws that we, the board, act, take very seriously as fiduciaries because the board wants the system to continue. And what it means is that we have to provide a special benefit to the people who contribute, and if we provide a general benefit, and those are weird, vague legal terms, but it means you're supposed to serve predominantly people who pay. And where that matters is this: in the last year, we've been threatened aggressively with legal action, people saying, "You're providing too big of a general benefit, and we're going to sue you and cause the PBID to go away," or at least, "We're going to cause it not to be renewed." So basically, we're going to take your funding system away, and we take that very seriously. So there's a problem, because the system does serve a lot of people who don't pay. Probably many of you don't pay and you enjoy it. I'm not saying that's bad, but it is a legal problem, okay? It's a legal problem, and it threatens the PBID. And the majority of the board agree with what we've heard your staff recommend, which is the PBID is the best, most logical system to continue into the future. It's worked for a long time, but the people who are unhappy and threatening legal action are concerned about the equity, that they're a lot, they're paying a lot of money for a service that provides a lot of service to people for free. Now, I've heard some of the people that have those complaints say they believe in the Emery Go-Around, and if the equity could be improved, and I don't know exactly how to define that tonight for you, but improved, meaning more people who are writing, that aren't paying, pay in, and again, I don't know the details, but that they will continue to support the idea of a PBID. I've heard that. So that's encouraging to me, but we need to work on the equity problem. And what we hope is that the council will give staff direction to do that, so that we could renew the P-Bid. It's a very reliable, stable funding system, and it doesn't dip into other coffers that just aren't flush. You're going to make lots of choices about where to spend money. We don't think you need to deplete sources when there is a source today that works.
Jeff.
I guess you can hear me. The mic seems kind of far away, but there's $2 million that pays for the P-Bid, I believe, and it comes from retail office and mixed spaces, and it should be $4 million, because they're the ones that get the benefit. We are going and we're shopping at those retail places like TJ's, Bevmo, Ross, Maxwell's, and I say that if our bus service is stopped And I say that if our bus service is stopped, we boycott those places because they have the power. They already give $2 million a year to keep that going. Well, they got to keep it going to the Emeryville original stops, and I propose that if we should get a stop at the, what do you call it, the Emeryville Marina. Wouldn't that be great if they could have a bus service? And what about getting a bus stop out to the end of the park? And the whole thing about this city turnaround, who designed the sidewalks so that we couldn't have a bus turnaround? Somebody should be accounted to that, should be held to the fire for that. And I just wanted to say one thing about the police officer. I'm a radical, obviously. And it's good we're giving $10,000 to catch the enemy of the working class, the lumpenproletariat, which is the criminal class. But there was a man that was killed by the Oakland Police, Alan Blueford, in May 2012, and he died from lack of blood. And there's a committee called Save Alan Blueford, or Freedom Justice for Alan Blueford, sorry. And there was another man that was killed, I forget his name, but the Oakland Police had to pay out $950,000, almost a million dollars, due to the heroic lawyer, John Burrit. So, I don't know how many people I'm talking to that know about this stuff, but there's a war going on. The 1% are attacking us every single day, every single hour, every single minute, and this is just another attack. And so, I say boycott those businesses, let those businesses know, if our stop is stopped, we stop the businesses. They got lots of money. The 1% are more richer than they've ever been in the history of the world. So, dare to struggle, dare to win. What kind of pie occupy?
Thank you.
Strike, unite, support the Bart workers, support the bulb, the Albany Bulb. People, you know where the Albany Bulb is, right behind the racetrack, they're being evicted. They're being put into buildings that have 15 people each.
Sir, if you believe in other people being able to speak-
15 people each.
The rest of the community would like to speak.
Your time's up. And the curfew is 8:00 p.m. And 15 men and 15 women and 16, almost 15 people at Albany Bulb.
Also, when you come up, if you could introduce yourself, I myself like to take your name down and take notes, just so I remember you.
Understood. Thank you. My name is Julie.
And then, just one quick second, another announcement, that if you could, if you would be willing to sign in also with your name. Okay, thanks.
My name is Julie, and I'm actually here on behalf of my third grade's daughter, Paisley, who is learning about civic responsibility. We saw the letters posted, we are Watergate residents, and we saw the letters posted, and she was actually outraged. We were inconvenienced greatly by the lack of the Emery Go-Around coming to those two stops while the streets were being refurbished. And I also am very clear that we serve, that bus route in particular, services a lot of elderly people who were also inconvenienced with just the simple things of shopping. So, that's an issue. That particular corridor services 1/10 of the entire population of Emeryville. So, that is another consideration. However, Emery Go-Around is not just servicing residents, it's also bringing in people from outside of Emeryville who are taking advantage of the system. But it sounds like the residents are being requested to actually absorb this cost. So, that is an issue. So, I understand that there are issues that need to be considered, financial considerations, but perhaps non-residents, maybe that's another alternative, non-residents could absorb some of the cost and not the residents. Because we already provide and help, you know, bolster the local businesses. So, I don't want to take up too much time. It's past bedtime.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sue Kelly, and I live at 4 Admiral Drive, number 423, in Watergate. And I have three points for my three minutes. And first of all, I want to thank all those people who had the foresight to start this Emery Go-Around and give it a really cute name, Emery Go-Around. Everybody else's transit systems are called Transit This and That and everything. Anyway, and I just want to say, I believe Emeryville, and we found out tonight, has all the hallmarks of cityhood. We are a metropolitan, very tiny metropolitan area. We have businesses, we have skyscrapers, one-story cottages, we have artists and theaters and shops and stores and companies and gourmet restaurants and takeouts and transportation hubs for the city of San Francisco and marinas from all over the world, and we have intersecting highways from north, south, east, and west. And the hallmark of a city is to have a public transportation system. And I think that's what we really need, and I'll let all those people who know how to fund these kind of things, I'll let them do that. Let's see, I lost something here. Okay. We also have a city government, all of you people who are working for Emeryville. And in this day and age, that is an accomplishment because that's what means most to all of you who are here. In other metropolitan areas, there are city incorporations known as boroughs and avenues, or more mundanely, suburbs. And there is an area in Emeryville, it's just the same sort of area, it's on the other side of the freeway, and it's an extension called Powell Street, generally referred to as the Watergate area. So, we're kind of a suburb, and we do need transportation out there just as much as you need it in the rest of the city. And I don't want to tell you that if there was a borough called the Bronx, and if there was no public transportation in the Bronx, or there was no transportation out to the avenues, it wouldn't be a pretty sight. So, I think we should keep our Admiral. We'd like to have one on Admiral, we thought we were going to have one. But not only did we not have a new Admiral bus stop, we didn't even have a bus. So, anyway, I just think, personally, I believe that everybody should share in paying for public transportation. I don't think the business people should be responsible for all that. I mean, that's my own personal take on this. And I hope you'll keep, what we're asking the City Council tonight is to do everything that they can to keep those stops at Captain and the police station and in the western suburbs out there.
Thanks, Ms. Kelly.
And my main job is to show you all these petitions that everybody signed.
If you could hand those to the city clerk, please.
There's close to 500.
Thank you.
Right, very good. Okay. My name is Ron Freund. I also live on the west end of the city at Watergate. And as you probably all know, all is not quiet on the western front. The problem with the TMA, it wasn't maybe so much that they didn't have the legal right to do it, but the question was, was it the right thing to do and the way you did it? That was the problem. From our point of view, it was done in a very arbitrary and secretive manner. I'm sure the meeting was open, but we were not advised about it, nor did we expect to see such an abrupt end to our service. So, given all of your PR specialties at Pixar and IKEA, et cetera, you might want to review how you handle that process. I want to posit that we should proceed on three assumptions. The first is that the Emery Go-Around service be permanently restored to the Watergate stops. The genie is out of the bottle, the send button has been clicked, the fat lady has sung. I think you get my drift. It's too late to make that kind of change. So, the issue is how to fund this deficit that the TMA has been talking about. I believe it should come from the business community. I think we should be seen as analogous to the television commercial industry in the sense that TV ads bring eyeballs to the companies. The Emeryville Bus Service or the Go-Around brings customers to the businesses. So, we are, in a sense, the eyeballs, and the EGR is the means by which we are brought to the businesses. So, given that framing, what are the options? Karen invited alternatives to some of these proposals up here. I actually read your report, Karen, and I didn't see any typos. One thing I didn't see is any effort to look at the cost structure. There are two big ticket items, and maybe I don't understand why they're so large in the budget, other than the maintenance and the fuel, et cetera. One is the office space or the occupancy line item, $115,000. It seems, I don't know, maybe some of the businesses could consider an in-kind donation. I believe the city does something with the Chamber of Commerce to reduce their cost. The second is the professional services contract, $300,000. Maybe they could have more competitive bidding? I don't know. Maybe they've already done that. But at least look at the cost side of it, not just the revenue side, as we hear in Congress these days. Look at changing the assessment structure. From what I read, there are more alternatives to a BID, oh, man, than a property bid. There's a B bid and a T bid, meaning you can assess on revenues or on businesses or on tourism.
Okay, thanks, Ron.
Thank you.
So, I hope you'll address those issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi there. My name is, is this working? Can you hear me? My name is Jennifer Fair. I live in, I live in the Watergate condos as well, and I think the Emery Go-Around should be expanded if any changes are made to the service. However, removing the Emery Go-Around from Watergate would be an irresponsible and unsafe decision for the residents and the city as a whole. The Emery Go-Around is one of Emeryville's great features, one that helped convince my husband and I to move here when we were moving to the Bay Area from Michigan four years ago. We could have settled anywhere, and we fell in love with this little city. Emeryville has great things to offer, and the Emery Go-Around makes things, that makes those things more accessible. The Emery Go-Around is a great way for businesses to tell Emeryville residents that they appreciate us and they want us to patronize their businesses. Asking disabled and elderly Watergate residents to go to the Watergate Towers to catch the bus is unsafe after dark and in rainy weather for those of us who are able to go that distance at all, but it's also completely out of reach for others. Removing these stops would tell me that you don't value us as Emeryville residents. Yes, there are some alternatives for those of us with special needs, but those alternatives are less convenient and segregate us from the rest of Emeryville's more able-bodied population. You cannot underestimate the value of normalcy and inclusion when it comes to making municipal decisions that affect the everyday lives of elderly and disabled residents. Residents do pay for this system. They pay indirectly by patronizing the businesses who pay. I do drive more than I ride the Emery Go-Around, but I stick close to Emeryville when I'm spending money. The fact is that local businesses sponsors the Emery Go-Around means that those businesses appreciate us locals who want to spend our money with them. Even though I'm not using the Emery Go-Around every day, its existence certainly factors into my decisions when I'm deciding where to shop. If either or both of the Watergate stops are removed, that tells me that Emeryville's businesses don't value me as a potential customer, and I'll just keep right on driving to Berkeley, Oakland, Albany, El Cerrito, or beyond, and the parking is going to be better anyway. Thank you very much.
Hi. Susan Hinchman, 3 Commodore Drive, long-term Watergate resident. This was a really painful evening. So many people have already left. I didn't want to leave so that I could speak on behalf of those who weren't able to stay because it was the right thing to do. The reason that I wanted to come here tonight, when I saw the signs posted on my door, is so I could share with you what a burden it's going to be for me to have to walk all the way to the Towers. My hair is going to blow around, my feet are going to hurt with my high heels on, and I was looking forward to sharing that pain with you tonight. But yesterday, when I was waiting for the Emery Go-Around at BART, I looked over to my left and I saw a woman with a walker. And I actually realized that this wasn't about me. I actually took her picture, and I brought it tonight, and I intended to show it, but I wanted to respect her privacy because that was the right thing to do. So, I listened to your presentations, and there's a lot of jargon that I don't understand and fancy legal and government decisions that I just don't have the capability to mull through. But I expect that you guys do know how to do that, and I expect that you will, and that you'll keep the Watergate service for all of us because it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Presentation.
Two minutes. What happened? Sorry.
My name is Rob Arias. I'm a ten-year Emeryville resident. I'm also on the Park Avenue District Advisory Committee, and, yeah, the PDF right there. That's the one. Yes. Thank you. I'm also the founder, editor of the Evil Eye News Blog. I wanted to share some results of a poll that is ongoing on the blog. If you want to take it yourself, you're more than welcome to. There is a poll on this blog that I'll show you that I want to share the results for. I'll get to that next page. So, as you know, currently, the route of Emery Go-Around takes you to MacArthur-BART. From there, three BART stations away, MacArthur, 19th, and then 12th, and then all the way to West Oakland, where from there, you get under the tunnel and you go to San Francisco. It's kind of a roundabout way for people that are trying to get into San Francisco right now, as opposed to the direct route, linear route, in fact, of taking Mandela Parkway directly south to get to West Oakland. Well, you'll be in the city, in Barcadero Station, probably within seven minutes. Of the poll participants that took this poll, 243 as it stands, 72% of them were residents. And then, the first question I asked them, "Where are they going?" Turns out, 78% of the ridership of the people that took this poll are going to San Francisco. So, the bottom line is, people that are going into San Francisco can save up to 25 to 30 minutes, round trip, maybe more. So, I'm just trying to tell you who your consumer is. Your consumer is going to San Francisco, and it would make sense to listen to consumers. This is not my idea. In fact, I heard it from our newly-elected Mayor Asher when she was campaigning. So, I don't know if I'm going to hold your feet to the fire as a campaign promise. A lot of people thought about this independently, but this is what people want. And it's just my responsibility as a citizen journalist to tell you what people want, and I figure you're the problem solvers to try to figure it out. Just going through the poll real quick, what if Emery Go-Around service was offered a West Oakland service? You would see an increase in ridership, and for a city that, as you may have seen, is second in childhood asthma, I think it's something that we should pursue. Second in the state, in fact, in childhood asthma. So, if everyone wants to be family-friendly, what parent is going to want to move their children to Emeryville when we're second in the state in childhood asthma? So, this is something we need to tackle. And what about SF commuters and visitors? People that are going to San Francisco, 79% of them would drive less and take Emery Go-Around more. So, the problems are solved, in my opinion. Just got to figure out the right way to do it. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
Yeah, I'm not sure which one it is. Sorry.
My name is Andy Getz, and I'm here to advocate what I think is the only long-term stable financing mechanism for the Emery Go-Around going forward. Although I'm associated with the Emeryville Properties Association, which is going to be preparing a ballot initiative for a sales tax funding mechanism for the Emery Go-Around, I think it's neither as equitable or as long-term stable as a assessment district. I noticed that the-
That's no problem. My name is Andy Getz, and I'm here to advocate what I think is the only long-term, stable financing mechanism for the Emery Go-Round going forward. Although I'm associated with the Emeryville Properties Association, which is going to be preparing a ballot initiative for a sales tax funding mechanism for the Emery Go-Round, I think it's neither as equitable or as long-term stable as a assessment district. I noticed that the, there's a slight difference between the nine options that you're being asked to consider in the staff report and the nine options that were on the slide that was up there, which is that the one called Property Owner Ratified Assessment District in the staff report is characterized as a renewal of the P bid in the slide. And I think there's a great distinction, because I think there are significant restrictions to the P bid form that are not restrictions in other forms of assessment districts. And I'm here to advocate some form of property owner assessment district, which will provide long-term, stable financing that is fair to all the businesses and residents of Emeryville, and I think we can do it. And my personal instinct is that it will be organized under the 1915 Act, but I don't know. I think that with a smart, experienced assessment engineer and a committed council and citizenry, I'm prepared to put a lot of work and time into getting long-term financing, helping whoever else volunteers to get long-term financing through an assessment district for the Emery Go-Round going forward for many years to come. Good luck.
Thank you.[639.70][639.70](Applause).
Good evening. My name is Ken Bukowski. I'm with the Emeryville Property Owners Association. And yes, we have been following the Emery Go-Round since I've not been on the council. I have recorded all the meetings, posted all the agendas, and made a lot of information public. We are proposing a ballot measure which would be a half-cent sales tax to fund the service. One, because we don't think people are going to agree on the fairness of assessments. Two, if, you don't want to see residents assessed, so this is the only way to have people from outside the community pay for it. You know, a half-cent, half-cent is only like 50 cents on $100. It's not a lot. And it's a way that everybody would be contributing. We could make this a city department. This has grown from a private service. It is a public bus service, and that's the way it should be treated. And as such, you wouldn't be able to just discontinue service and say, "Well, these people don't pay, let's not serve them." I mean, I never, I didn't agree with that. I think that was wrong. And we never threatened to sue over the placement of the Watergate stop. We threatened to sue because the whole thing is wrong, trying to make it right, and that's what we want to do. I think a half-cent sales tax makes a lot of sense. City council could create a board to replace the TMA. The assets of the TMA could become the assets of the city, and then residents would have some say in the operation instead of the way it is right now. You know, the board they have has got the seven top largest contributors, so they're locked in, and all the other small people in Emeryville property business, business and property owners, they're paying, and they have almost no say in the board. And that's not right. This is a public service, and we need to graduate to that point, and I think we should fund it with a half-cent sales tax rather than give it to the county. The county's going to be asking you for another half-cent, and what are you getting? More AC transit service? Well, they don't even serve Watergate. So, we're getting a share from the county. I think rather than support the county measure, we should support the local measure, and that would give you enough money to buy new buses, improve service, and add service to West Oakland. So, we'll be circulating that in the next few months, and hopefully you'll agree, and let it go forward. Thank you.[763.81][763.81](Applause).
My name is Carol Chapman. I live at Watergate Complex, and I ride the Emery Go-Round at least 25 times a month, sometimes 30 or more. And so, at that rate, at $180 per ride, I will have at least $450 a year under consideration. I will be paying attention to how this budget issue gets resolved because I regard that as a significant amount of money. The reason, though, that I'm here is because I believe Murphy has a law of unintended consequences, and the city dug up the streets along there and created this funny sidewalk system along the road there.[815.75][815.75](Applause). And now that they have it in place, it is impossible for the Emery Go-Round to turn around at the stop that it has. It has to go all the way down to the end of the bay and make its turnaround there. For those of us who ride that, that adds three to four minutes to our commute, but it makes the drivers nuts because they have to go all the way out there and then come all the way back before they can let us off. The city, Emeryville City, needs to fix this. You know, they created something. They didn't intend to do it that way, but it is a problem, and the bus can't run that way. So, please fix it. Thanks.[858.41][858.41](Applause).
Joyce Jacobson, 4 Admiral Drive at Watergate. New mayor, former mayor, city council members, TMA board members and staff. I'm enjoying riding Emery Go-Round like never before. We know tonight that Emery Go-Round has been providing service to the city of Emeryville for almost 20 years now, and it has become an integral part of our community. Many people who live here depend on it. For Watergate, it's a lifeline. So, we are dealing with something that I'm not hearing much discussion about at all, which I call public policy. We have the P bid representing businesses and their needs and responsibilities, but like squatter's rights, because this service has been provided to our community, has become part of our community, we are also dealing with public policy. And under public policy, the public has some rights, and they also have some responsibilities. So, I would like to request that a committee be formed to look at the bigger issues that are involved here, that this committee have community and rider representatives on it, and from here on in, when decisions are made, that there be some input from the community because this is our bus service, and without it, you'll have to provide us with something else. And I specifically would like to ask that at least one voice be someone representing seniors and disabled, because that's a group that the service is essential for that group. Okay, that's one item. The other item is Graybone. I haven't known much about Graybone until I attended that meeting in October, and I've done a lot of thinking about the whole situation since that time. The current Graybone management is not in tune with this community. They don't seem to understand the community very well. I think they would not have recommended to the TMA board that our service be chopped if they had understood this community. If they had been in tune with this community, they would not have considered that. There was not one ounce of conversation during the meeting they took that vote where community was mentioned in any terms, except the terms that Mr. Sears used tonight, which is non-pairs.
Thank you.
Well, we're more than non-pairs. So, I want a hard look taken at Graybone.[1058.58][1058.58](Applause).
Hi, my name is Finley Robbins. I live on Commodore Drive at Watergate. And kind of to continue what Joyce just said about non-payment, I feel that most of the riders from Watergate do leave money throughout the community, spending money at businesses, and these businesses are supporting the P bid, but in essence, we're helping to support that. And I would like to see that service continues at the Watergate stops. It's not enough just to have them at the Towers. There are a lot of people that cannot walk that distance, and again, as riders, they are leaving money throughout the community. And something maybe in my naivety on that list of where money was perhaps going to come from, an increase in tax or parcel tax, what about considering charging the riders? I heard a million riders a year. That's a lot of money that would be generated if riders paid something towards that. The peninsula has no other means of transportation, and if it was AC transit, we would be paying a fare. So, that's one thought that I had about including that in the discussion about where money would come from to support this. But I hope that the temporary measures restoring those stops, a solution can be arrived at that will include those stops there for the course of always having the Emery Go-Round. Thank you.
Thank you.[1183.83][1183.83](Applause).
Hi, my name is Louise Engel, a resident about 25 years at Watergate, and I've also spoken before the city council on occasion on other city issues. So, I've been active. I pay attention to what's going on here. I think just, I want to lay out an emotional comment. I think I really did not like the heavy-handed way in which the buses, the stops were just summarily ended without notice. That I was just really totally astounded by. So, I hope in the future that does not happen again, and that you take to heart the remarks made by other people here. Getting back to the issue, it seems right away, when I began to investigate the structure of the transit, of the business district and such, I was wondering, why are, why am I standing here before this board or this council when the speaker earlier kept emphasizing repeatedly that it's the district that makes all the decisions, it's, or that association? They have the authority, they raise the funds, they make the decisions. Why, why are we here before you? Why do the, why are their representatives not here before us? Now, I understand that there is a bigger issue that I was not in touch with, that the structure of this association is being called into question. Maybe it's, it's, it's seen its life. Maybe something else needs to be put into place. I'm open to that. I do recognize the equity issue. However, I think one basic factor in that equity issue of, the speaker had earlier emphasized that something like 80% is being paid by retail office and such, and the residents are, you know, less than a half of a fraction of something. Those shuttles are running on city streets. Those shuttles are running through traffic signals. Those shuttles, when problems arise in public safety, are being addressed by the Emeryville Police Force. The Watergate community has been here for 40 years. We've been paying taxes into the city through all of, all of those years. The shuttle has been in existence 10, 15 years, you know, less than half. So, it seems like there is a bigger issue here. I don't propose to be able to address it or to come up with any resolution to it, but I do concur with my neighbors that the shuttle is essential. It's, it's an integral part to any community. We're becoming more and more dense. I listened to the presentation on the newest proposal. You know, we're increasing, we, the residents who have been here the longest, are absorbing all of the impact of that district. Please take care of us. Don't penalize us.
Thank you.[1375.65][1375.65](Applause).
Joe Lutz, Emeryville resident. Can you hear me okay?
A little bit higher, Joe.
A little higher.
That's a bad setup.
Okay. And pardon me for reading, because I have a lot to say. After a lot of reading and listening, it is apparent to me that Graybone is not operating with the best interests of the residents or the city in mind. The contradictory and disingenuous statements about the stop removals, the lack of community outreach, and a lack of financial planning has led to distrust and complete lack of confidence by the community. The TMA board has yet to exert its oversight responsibilities to remedy these deficiencies. We are waiting. When I was appointed to the Planning Commission in the early '90s, the city was struggling to deal with the mass exodus of heavy industry that refused to clean up the toxic meth left behind, the extent of which was so great that the city won a Nobel Peace Prize for the cleanup process. Because of this low-density development was not feasible in most areas, as the remediation and assembly costs were in the millions and tens of millions of dollars in some cases. As we began rebuilding the city, we were required to go through an extensive and painstakingly detailed EIR process, which was monitored by several regulatory agencies and extensively scrutinized and challenged legally. My fellow commissioners and I spent dozens, and in some case, hundreds of hours on these EIRs, trying to get them right. It was very tedious work. Luckily, thanks to Nora and others, the Emery Go-Round was born early on in our efforts. It provided substantial mitigations in the area of traffic, parking, and quality of life issues. It became a foundational element of the rebuilding process with a string of EIRs depending on its mitigations. It also provided a sense of city pride, and for me personally, along with city council members and planning commissioners, allowed us to ease the burden of development to our residents. An environmental impact report means exactly that. What impact does the proposed development have on the environment? The environment, in this case, means the residents and the city infrastructure. Mitigations are for the resident and the city. This is not in question. One can only wonder how much worse traffic would be if residents were forced back into their cars. So, when I hear statements from the TMA board, the management company, and the EPOA implying that the residents of the city are freeloaders, I'm angered and appalled. The Emery Go-Round belongs to the residents and the city, not the businesses, not the management company. The P bid is a funding mechanism, not a deed of ownership. If the TMA board and the management company want to remove two 20-year-old stops which serve paying TMA members and nearby residents, and which add less than a half mile and five minutes to a route, while recently extending a route to include the Berkeley Bowl, the city must step in to ensure EIR mitigations are not undermined. They must also create and enforce remedies to agreements that leave the residents out. Otherwise, the community will take action. One more thing. Additionally, if the stops are removed, the TMA members who have enjoyed unprecedented goodwill and the support of the residents for so long in the planning process will no longer be able to rely on that support. They can instead expect strong opposition in the commission and city council hearings and at the ballot box.
Thanks.
Thank you.[1579.71][1579.71](Applause).
Jerry Fishman, Watergate. For that lady who wants to take a picture of somebody in a walker at BART, here I am.[1582.71][1582.71](Laughter). And she has my permission to show it anytime, anyplace.[1584.71][1584.71](Laughter). I've lived at Watergate now for over 25 years. When I first moved there, Emery Go-Round was, I don't even think it was a conception at all. I don't think anybody knew anything about it. But I was a young buck then, and I was driving, and I didn't need it. But since then, while I was told by a friend of mine to stop driving, and I thought, "Well, okay, maybe it's a good idea. I've reached the point where maybe I should quit driving." My friends thought I should quit driving, and I think the public at large (Laughter) would agree with them. And with the Emery Go-Round, I thought, "It's perfect. I'll just go out to the corner and, you know, get the, get the bus, and I'm home free." Well, it's impossible for me now to walk down to the Towers. I tried it, and I mean, you know, I, one time, I nearly fell, and I don't think that's, you know, a good idea, you know? I don't want to have to call 911. Anyway, what I'm asking is that we make the stops on Powell Street permanent, and in addition, we put the stop in at Admiral, which was in the original contract when they decided to reconfigure the streets, you know, reconfigure the sidewalks and all that. It was there, and anybody, I got it on my computer. If anybody wants it, just let me know, and I'll forward the item to you. So, please, let's get the stop back at Admiral, or not back at there, but let's get one there at Admiral. You know, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.[1678.58][1678.58](Applause).
Betsy Cooley, resident, and I keep rewriting this, so this might be a little disjointed. But we'd had discussions recently about what was said at the last TMA board meeting about closing the stops at Watergate, whether it was just for the, because of the problems with the construction, or if there were other reasons. And so, I actually spent three hours listening to the recording that Ken Bukowski had posted. It was a two-hour meeting and going back and forth, and they actually did say that they were proposing
I'll just go out to the corner and, you know, get the, get the bus and I'm home free. Well, it's impossible for me now to walk down to the towers. I tried it and, I mean, you know, I, one time I nearly fell. And I don't think that's, you know, a good idea, you know, I don't want to have to call 911. Anyway, what I'm asking is that we make the stops on Powell Street permanent and in addition, we put the stop in at Admiral, which was in the original contract when they decided to reconfigure the streets, you know, reconfigure the sidewalks and all that. It was there and anybody, I got it on my computer, if anybody wants it, just let me know and I'll forward the item to you. So please, let's get the stop back at Admiral, or not back at there, but let's get one there at Admiral. Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Betsy Cooley, resident. And I keep rewriting this, so this might be a little disjointed. But we'd had discussions recently about what was said at the last TMA Board meeting about closing the stops at Watergate, whether it was just for the, because of the problems with the construction or if there were other reasons. And so I actually spent three hours listening to the recording that Ken Bukowski had posted. It was a two-hour meeting and going back and forth. And they actually did say that they were proposing to close the stops and that the U-turn issue was just accelerating the decision. So the U-turn issue wasn't causing the decision to close, it was just speeding it up. So the Emery Ground has, oh, and I also wanted to say that the P-Bid, what's frustrating to me about that, I totally understand, I've done a lot of reading about it since I started hearing about what the problem was with, it needs to serve the businesses and not the community. But what's frustrating is that the, the businesses asked to use the P-Bid for a funding mechanism and now they're turning around and saying, oh, because the P-Bid says it's to serve the businesses, we can't necessarily, you know, go out of our way to, you know, serve the residents. And so the Emery Ground has established a clear precedent of providing transportation to residents in Emeryville for almost 20 years and has become the de facto public transit system for the entire city. If the TMA succeeds in their proposal to close the bus stops at Watergate, the retail businesses will be providing free transit for customers who come from out of town while at the same time closing bus stops of customers who live in Emeryville. And we very, and then I put also, which I guess I will read, I wasn't going to, and then to add insult to injury at the last meeting, they voted to pay consultants to design routes that optimize service to the businesses, which will no doubt be at the expense of the residents. Because that was the reason they said they probably were not going to be able to continue serving Watergate because it, you know, it is mostly residents and it isn't businesses that, although there are two businesses there that are paying into it. So we've, it's been a great service, we very much appreciate it having the Emery Ground and I'm asking you to help save our bus stops and keep the Emery Ground coming to Watergate. Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy.
Hi, Lauren Westreich, business owner. And I addressed the council when they presented the findings from the last study and I just wanted to mention a couple of things. I know that you're hearing a lot about Watergate, but I want to talk about the Emery Go Round in a, in a bigger way. I think that there's a couple of issues and the funding mechanism is obviously crucial. The levy structure, I think, needs to be expanded and sort of drilled down so that whether it's a P-Bid or an assessment district, because I, I'm not sure politically it makes a lot of sense to do a property tax, but whatever, that to be able to drill down and, you know, there's a difference between an industrial warehouse use versus an office commercial use versus a retail use and perhaps even an education use with, you know, having some big education users in the area. So, and then also to be, and I think that the TMA has been, but to continue to be thoughtful about the routes and I think having a northwest, I mean, an east-west and a north-south route through the city makes sense. And, you know, going down to Watergate would accomplish the east-west. And to be thoughtful about the times and the frequencies, which again, I think they have been, and maybe the different, different sizes of buses and whatever. It would be great if our neighbors in Oakland would be willing to consider contributing in the way that our neighbors to the north have so that we could go to the West Oakland BART. But, you know, I don't think Emeryville should be funding the entire E-BOT system. And I think there is an issue that has been made abundantly clear that the P-Bid system does fall on its knees if it is a general benefit to the entire city. So, you know, the, a couple of people have sort of forced your hand in terms of, you know, addressing the funding mechanism, but I think the Emery Go Round is a wonderful benefit. And as a business owner, I have no problem contributing to the Emery Go Round. I think it is definitely worth it for the, for the city. But I also think it's appropriate to, like I said, really look at that structure and how the fees are assessed and also to consider things like, you know, Andy's suggestion for an assessment district. And finally, to, it maybe it is possible to have a hybrid funding mechanism where you could have, you know, a P-Bid or assessment district and then also an incremental component that could be like a sales tax. I think if you consider trying to do a parcel tax, you run the risk of everybody wanting a bus stop in front of their house, which would, you know, kill the thing too. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Sam Fushi, I live at Watergate on Admiral Drive. And for a year, for a number of years, I was on the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee in Emeryville. I was also on the Climate Change Committee that developed the Climate Change Plan for Emeryville that this fair council adopted. And I just want to say that in both of those experiences and others I've had in Emeryville, you know, a huge part of what we've all tried to do in Emeryville is try to create a more transit-friendly city, a city that didn't rely on automobiles, partly because, just for our own survival, but also because it's the right thing to do. And so Emeryville Go Round is such a major part of us being a transit-friendly city and it needs to serve all the city, Emeryville, I mean, Watergate included. So I'm sure we can work out how to pay for that, but that needs to be, I think, our sort of overarching vision as it has been for a long time in Emeryville. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Asher and council members, and congratulations on your first meeting. Bob Cantor, I'm the president and CEO of the Emeryville Chamber of Commerce. I've been designated by the chamber to give you a position. I will leave you a written statement at the conclusion of my remarks. I'm not going to read it, but I'll just comment on it and answer a few questions. I want to first of all thank Karen for that very thorough background report. I also want to thank Jeff Sears, who's the chair of the TMA Board. I am also on the TMA Board, I'm the chamber's representative, I've been on for years now, I've been the vice chair and held other offices. Jeff hit on one key point, which has been thoroughly discussed. Under the P-Bid law, and I will not get into the details of that one bit, Mr. Biddle can do that for you if you want to report, but the concept of it is extremely simple. And this is not just my opinion nor Jeff Sears' opinion, this has been state law for over 100 years. When you, certain properties are assessed a certain amount of money, those properties in exchange get the service. If the properties aren't assessed, they don't get the service. That's what the law says, that's what we're facing. Having said that, the system, as you all know, is open to everybody anyway who can get themselves to a stop. No one's ID'd, no one's questioned where they live or work. You can be a foreigner visiting here on business in a hotel, not even a resident in the United States, if you can get yourself to a stop, you can ride the service and it's free. The service is free and open to everybody right now, as long as you can get yourself to one of the stops. As the service has been immensely successful and supported by our businesses and everyone and is a model nationally, naturally, everybody wants it. That's natural, of course they do. The question is, how do you expand it citywide and pay for it? Or, to quote a former elected official in the city of Oakland who's no longer there, "Everybody wants to go to heaven, but nobody wants to die." So how do you, how do you get this? How do you get the service? We have two recommendations. One is, if you want to make it a real community service, this is a small enough town, the community needs to buy into it. Some kind of funding mechanism, I'm not going to suggest what that is. If you really want it, then everybody needs to step up with some kind of contribution. We can discuss what that some kind means. If that is not economically nor politically feasible, because that would require an election, we would then recommend that the city look at some kind of contribution under contract to the TMA to expand the service citywide. I would point out that in addition to the P-Bid assessments, which is paid for over 90%, by the way, by the commercial and business community, all those other services that someone has cited, the streets, the police, the traffic lights, the money for that, over at least 70%, separately from the P-Bid assessments, comes from your business community anyway. So the business community pays a lot more to support the funds than they do than just from the P-Bid assessment. That's our position, that's the official position, I will leave in a written copy with Karen so she can distribute with you. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Eugene Sway. I am an architect and city planner. I'm an international professor, author of seven books on the subject of ecology, architecture, and city planning. And I've been a Emeryville resident since 1990 and I've raised three children who also are, two of which are residents here, and my mother is also a resident. And I've just come back from China and I was, I was told about this whole situation. I teach in China, I teach graduate students there about city planning and ecology and architecture. And it seems to me that, that the situation is quite simple, that if you want to seek more funds, we pay quite a bit, a significant amount of tax to the city. So why not as a, as city administrators, simply decide to take a few dollars from those funds and pay for the, the funds needed to, to keep the, the bus running to Watergate? Also, the, the Watergate, the, the bus system is a very much needed system, I think, in Watergate. According to the Watergate Association, there are 2,700 residents in Watergate, 2,700. And there are 1,249 units paying taxes to the city of Emeryville. So it seems to me that there's more than enough funds to do whatever you need to keep the buses running. And by the way, the, I just learned of the turnaround difficulties and that, to me, coming from a city planning and architecture standpoint, is an oversight on whoever's responsible for designing the sidewalk system. But bar that, the, it seems to me that the, the funding is already there from the Watergate's residents and I'm sure that they would gladly decide, or give you permission to use a few dollars from their already annual taxes, property taxes, which are significant. And that, that the, that the route to Watergate being one-third of your population, it seems absurd that, that that route would ever be considered not, to be discontinued and not usable. So it seems to me as citizens of a, I think, a innovative city in the Bay Area, that this, this problem could be remedied very simply. So from a professional standpoint, I, I'd like to give my opinion about that. Thanks.
Hello.
Hi.
This is my first time I ever came here.
Welcome.
Only to look at that on my doorway, this notice. I've been living here for 25 years in Watergate. I used four-time Emery Go Round, maybe three times, maybe five times. I have three children, never went to school here. They went to Berkeley, not high, but Catholic schools. I've used maybe one time, police. Because my daughter mistakenly called, who was two-years-old, 911. I never used fire department, ever. And if you cut it off, it's fine with me, but it's not good for the people who really use those. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Katrina. I'm a much younger resident of Watergate. I've lived at Watergate for a year and a half. And I must say that although I'm not, sorry, I'm not as affected as my fellow residents, but I do see them on weekends driving past, waiting for the bus. My favorite memory is I would, I was there on Saturday because I didn't want to pay $2 for Bay Street and I see an elderly couple holding hands, walking to the Watergate Market Bus Stop and just sitting waiting for the bus because they're just going to spend the day at Bay Street. And so I decided to come here tonight to represent everyone that couldn't be here because they can't drive or whatnot. But my mother is an example of someone that uses Emery Go Round who doesn't live here. She lives in Fremont, she comes to visit me. She doesn't drive very well on the freeway because she was like 70-years-old. And she takes the bus, goes to my apartment, you know, hangs out with me, and then she stops by Trader Joe's to go back home to Fremont. So it's very useful for her and all the, and it's great when she comes to visit me because I can't always go down to see her since I'm working up here. And as a, as an ex-bus driver, I know that turn sucks. It's not undoable, but it just sucks. And as everyone voiced here before, it's kind of rude to have the stop taken away from us without prior notice. So it's very informative with everything, with the budgets, I understand that. But please be conscious to your residents as well. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jesse Cruz, I'm a Watergate resident. And I just wanted to say that I've used the Emery Go Round service extensively. I used to be a graduate student at Berkeley and used it every day. And honestly, that was part of the reason I chose to purchase a piece of property at Watergate was because of the access to public transportation. It's why I've chosen to remain there and purchase a second piece of property at Watergate. And one concern of mine is the fact that if public transportation is removed, that's going to lower the property value of everywhere, every unit in Watergate, which is a large portion of Emeryville, number one. And then number two, after listening to some of the discussion tonight, I would be extremely uncomfortable if there was any portion of public funding to the Emery Go Round service if it did not continue to, to service Watergate. I wouldn't, if, I understand that I'm not a business that pays into the system, I get that, and I'm happy to do something to pay into that system because I'd like to have it available. But if the service will not be available, then I definitely do not want to pay into the system. So I just wanted to voice that concern as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to speak? Any other members of the public? Go ahead, come forward, please, yeah.
I am Catherine Holken, I live at 3 Admiral. And in the past have used it when I commuted to downtown Oakland to work. And now I use it to commute to BART to take a Kaiser shuttle. I think a number of people who actually go to the Oakland Kaiser, who live at Watergate may be doing the same thing. My mother used it to come out here, my brother uses it to come out here. And as I age, it was my lifesaver. Because when I no longer can drive, that is my only transportation. Now, when I first bought my, my condo here, AC Transit came out. And you started the Emery Go Round and they don't come out anymore. We have to have bus service. I doubt if AC Transit is going to want to come out because I think they had to go clear out to the big turnaround at the end of the park to turn their big buses around. So I sat through, learned a great deal from your presentation and know much more background now about what's happening. But we need bus service on this, on this peninsula. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to come speak? Okay, well then we can, yeah, we'll close the public comment for now and we can hear from council.
Well, I'm happy to go first.
Yes, go ahead, Jennifer, please.
First of all, thank you. Thank you for sharing your stories, your opinions, your point of view. It's, it's essential and it's important and I'm glad that we could hear from so many of you. And those who just came and listened and didn't speak, your presence is also important. I have several thoughts about this and I value public transportation. I think it's, it's what's going to save us from the cars that we like so much and that are so convenient. And in a 1.2 square-mile town with 10,000 people now and 16,000 people within the next 20 years, it's really important that we do everything we can to make sure that public transportation is a viable and reliable option. I want to thank the folks who brought us the Emery Go Round. Nora was on in the Emery Go-Around by putting in sidewalks. I mean, sidewalks should not be competing with public transportation, folks, right? We kind of would like to have both. So if the staff could just briefly address that and clarify. Maurice?
Sure, I'll attempt to do that. Prior to the sidewalks, the buses were a little bit smaller, and some of them could make the U-turn without having to do a three-point turn. When they, when they purchased the larger buses, if they were to make that turn, they would actually have to turn into Admiral Drive in order to make the U-turn.
Which they did?
That's what they were doing all along. The new sidewalk is only two feet further into the street than, or the cars are parked two feet further out into the street than they were before. But the new sidewalk has the bulb out. So with the bulb out, it's a little bit more difficult to turn into Admiral Drive to make the U-turn. And in fact, the operators of the, of the Emery Go-Around buses don't like that move because it puts the bus in the alignment of the crosswalk. So if, if the buses were to have made the U-turn the way they want to do it right now, they couldn't have made it before the buses, before the sidewalk was put in. The radius is too large to do so. So in order to do so, even if we didn't build a sidewalk, if they were to do the U-turn the way they want to do it now, you would have to widen the street on the south side of the street.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. I appreciate it. So what I hear is that we also have an organization, an association, that is making the decisions around our public transportation. And, you know, AC Transit has an elected board, but we are vulnerable as a community to having influence over the decisions that are made. And I think that's been made really clear as well. So I see a need to expand and not reduce service in town. I know that we have the eBots study that's going on, but I don't think that alone Emery Go-Around or AC Transit or eBots is going to address all of the needs for Emeryville's public transportation. And I also think that this is not really a, a problem that needs to be solved only by our city. I think actually this is a regional issue. And I think that the fact that it, for, I live on Doyle Street in, in the kind of, between the, well, between the small family homes and light industrial kind of area, and Emery Go-Around doesn't serve my part of town actually well at all. And so I, I find other ways. I take AC Transit, I ride my bike, I drive my car. But Emery Go-Around, for me, for my part of town, is a way to get out of the town, a way to get to MacArthur-Bart. And for people coming into town, I feel like, you know, MacArthur-Bart is obviously the key portal there. For Watergate, what I hear, it's very different. It's connecting you to Emeryville. And the services and the, the shopping areas and jobs, and that's, that's very different perspective than from where I live in town. So I really appreciate actually being able to hear that from you. And I think that's somewhat unique, and I think it's important to recognize again how difficult our connectivity is, you know, Powell is just a nightmare in terms of walking and biking. It's not pleasant, and that's why Emery Go-Around is so vital, I think. So I would like to direct the staff to find new revenue and to look at several different options for that. I'm not interested in the sales tax. I, I think that a sales tax is regressive. Yes, it's people who are coming to shop in our towns, we also shop in our town. And it's, you know, for people who have less disposable income, sales tax has a much bigger hit on them. So in my political philosophy, I don't like sales tax as a way to solve this. I, I hear from Eugene actually about the idea of the general fund just contributing, and I think that's something to look at. Initially, when I hear that, we're very protective of our general fund. You know, we lost $30 million of redevelopment money every year, just last year, so we're kind of wary about touching our general fund for many reasons. 54% goes towards police and fire, and even if you're not using it, you want to know that it's there. So that's a real issue for us, and we have other services. We have our great senior center, and we're, we have our child development center and other things that, and our parks that we want to maintain. So general fund is very special, but I, I'm willing to actually consider how we might want to include that. At first, I was said absolutely not, don't touch our general fund, but I think that could be a possibility. But I really want staff to look at regional funding. The state of California has a mandate with SB 375 to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions, to have TDM strategies in place. We have to have our climate action plan succeed. And there is cap and trade funding, which will hopefully not be borrowed again next year and be used towards these kinds of things. Well, MTC, which is our regional entity, holds the purse strings. ACTC, which is our county entity, also has very defined projects. I think we, as a small city, need to talk with our, our regional folks. There's going to be actually $10 billion that the state is looking at how to spend under cap and trade. And so I'm hoping, that's a long-term plan again, but I think that we really need to look hard at some of the regional funding issues because if it's West Oakland-Bart, if it's MacArthur-Bart, it's not just about Emeryville residents or businesses. And then finally, I really would like to look at parking revenue generation. Most of the private parking in town has to be paid for right now. Bay Street, someone mentioned the now $3 when I was there the other day to park for anything less than three hours at Bay Street. And there were lots of cars going in and out at Bay Street Parking Garage. It was packed. At the hotels, you have to pay for parking. At most of the office buildings, I believe, folks pay for parking. And I don't think it's a bad thing. I think we should pay for parking because parking's expensive to build, and we, we know that cars cost us money in the greater scheme of things, but we're not paying for it. And so cars are subsidized, and I think we need to pay if we're going to drive a car. So parking revenue on the private side and also on the public side, there are parking benefit districts, there are ways to make sure that people who drive end up contributing to things like the Emery Go-Around, and I would like to look into that as well. A year or two ago, one of our residents, who I think, I don't know if he's still around, he was here earlier this evening, Stephen Keller, put forth an idea that was very bold about taxing not a percentage of parking, private parking revenues, but taxing per private parking space in town. And I can't remember if it was 14,000 spaces he counted up by satellite. He couldn't look in the private garages because he couldn't see them. But huge potential. You know, at $30 a space per month, he calculated something like $5.6 million per year. That would pay for Emery Go-Around. I'm not sure that that's the way we want to go, but I think that's something to look at and, and look at other funding sources. So in other cities, they have taxes on private parking. Yes, so I would like to look into that. And then the parcel tax and the idea of a different assessment district, I'm not quite sure, I don't, I don't understand what that would look like, the BBID and the TBIDs that were mentioned, but I would like staff to come back with more information on that because I think there may be something we haven't thought of or has not yet come forward. And in closing, I just want to reiterate how, how impressed I am with all of the ideas that have been put forward, the thoughtful letters, your preparation to speak tonight, your organization, the stickers, the sign. It is a public good. It is something that should be there for everyone, and yet how to pay for it and trying to understand how best to fund it is what is, to me, the issue to work on, not whether it should exist. And finally, I guess to staff is how can we, if, if the P-Bid does continue to exist, that idea of a hybrid or blending of funds, it's not clear to me if you have special benefits and general benefits, how you can actually blend the funding mechanisms, and I'd like to know more about that. Thank you.
Someone else?
I guess I'll, I'll take it.
Go ahead.
You know, I think what's happened, the Emery Go-Around has gotten to be, you know, really a foundation of Emeryville. It's like the sewer system, the streets and the roads. So once, you know, it's, it's something that's going to be our foundation going forward as it's been in our foundation in the past, as far as changing the city of Emeryville. And we all know that it's taken off a lot of cars. So I agree with Jennifer. I think we have to find a means to fund it, and I too am against the sales tax. I think it's the wrong thing to do and the wrong message to send. But I, I see that there's transportation grants, so I think what we should do is, I don't know what the status is of applying for any grants, but I would say what the first thing we should do is apply for as many grants as we possibly can. And I have no problems with parking meters either, because a lot of these areas, I meant, you go down Powell Street, nothing changes during the course of the day. The cars are there all day long. And I know on my little street on 62nd Street, I have people that pull in, they park all day long. And then I have neighbors that have five and six.
With that being said, I want to talk some about the regional appeals and approaches that we may be faced with because we have a problem that is bigger perhaps than what the local resources can, can address. Alameda County Transportation Commission has different pots of money for programming, for programs. And running shuttles is considered a program, it's not considered a project. And out of that, the money that Emeryville gets just kind of by right, it's a straight allocation, is under local streets and roads. We could use local streets and roads money to fund the Go-Around, but that means that we don't slurry seal the, the streets as often, or we don't do other kind of maintenance to that infrastructure. And while the shuttle service has become part of our infrastructure, it still needs good roads to run on. So, so, but that would be a choice that council would have if they wanted to, to have ACTC money pass through, through the, through the sales tax measure. I'm talking about Measure B. And with the new Measure B, the, the reauthorization of Measure B failed by 700 votes at the last election countywide. But that would have doubled the pot of money that we get through local streets and roads. And so when you're growing the pot of money, then you can maybe think about funding new things and not just existing things. So there will be a new Measure B, ballot measure on the ballot at 2014. And it is to augment the existing half-cent sales tax to a full penny. And I encourage everybody to look at that very carefully. There is going to be a new category of expenditure in that called Innovation and Technology Fund. It's 1% of all of the sales tax revenue that will be generated. That is, staff has told me that's possible, that shuttles could be funded under that 1% of that, of the new pie, should that measure pass. So for Emeryville to think about putting a competing sales tax measure on when we have a county measure that's going to provide so much through so many different modes of transit, as well as infrastructure, road construction, road maintenance, that, so I, I think it's just unnecessarily divisive to have two sales tax measures on the same ballot. And the last thing I wanted to say is, so with the new Measure B, if it passes, we could still use, we could consider using local streets and roads money. We could apply for that innovation technology grant, although of course that is going to be competitive. And the other source of new money Jennifer already mentioned, which is the cap and trade money coming from the state. But I don't think that any of those are going to be straight allocations like local streets and roads is. It's all going to be competitively granted. So I think we need to, to think carefully, you know, now the funding for the Go-Around is, is in jeopardy, and we have to come up with an answer. It's just an indispensable part of the, part of the service of the city, and it's an important mitigation measure for the traffic and the congestion.
Nora, do you want to speak?
First off, thanks all the Watergate people for coming. You were absolutely outstanding today, and I think you've really demonstrated to the council and the community the importance of this bus service. But I have to say something. When I came over here this, this evening and I pulled out of Commodore, what should be, I think it was a setup, what should come along Powell Street but an Emery Go-Around bus that made a perfect U-turn at Commodore? And I'm thinking to myself, you know, there's a lot of smoke here. I don't know, I don't know what the reality is.
Yeah, take the camera.
And our city engineer has taken a lot of abuse, I believe unnecessarily, but that's, that's beside the point. You all have come here because you're looking to have some kind of assurance that you have elected officials that understand the importance of the, the service to the Watergate community and to the Watergate Peninsula. And I don't, I think we've all demonstrated here that we understand the value of the Emery Go-Around, but I sense that we have not really addressed the issue of what are you going to do about a permanent stop at, at Watergate to service approximately 25% of your city? And I, I think we, we can't just talk in nebulous terms about, although I'm a big believer in going after outside money, as you all know. We, we want to go out after outside money, we want to consider things, but, and it is part of a regional complexity here on transit, but we have to address the issue that we have created what is a very successful, I'm sorry to say, monster. Because the, the success that it's had has really created a dilemma for us. And I think Joyce put her, her fingers on it. It's moved into the arena of public policy. I am concerned that, we can talk about long-range plans of funding the Emery Go-Around, but we have a serious problem. The, the P-Bid, the Emery Go-Around is under attack from the Emeryville Property Owners Association. We have got to get, in a shorter length of time than, you know, long-term, some understanding of how we can, when I, when 2016 comes, how we can be assured that the P-Bid will continue. And I, one of the, the speakers had a good idea. I know staff doesn't like to hear this, yet another task force, but I'm reminiscent of the task force on the Fire Department. It brought in people from the community and with staff and with council, with council members, worked in a finite time period. And I'm really talking about the first quarter of, of 2014, that we gather together, we go over these options, and we look at the options that we're going to be forced into either in a 2014 election. And by the way, I agree with my fellow council members, I don't believe a sales tax just in the city of Emeryville is a smart idea. It's just another phony gimmick. But that's just aside. But anyhow, so I would encourage us to think about establishing a task force with a finite timeline, and one of the, you've all had wonderful suggestions about what to consider, but I'd like to focus on what Andy Getz said. He said a couple of things, that there are other alternatives to the P-Bid. It doesn't just have to be, if you don't benefit, you don't get to ride. So, and he said another thing that's extremely important. He said he would work for it. And I believe Andy was very instrumental in seeing that the first P-Bid passed. So we've got an offer here, we've got a rough plan to pursue, and thank you Karen for the masterful presentation you gave. But let's take an action tonight to establish a task force with a finite time. in the city of Emeryville is a smart idea. It's just another phony gimmick. But that's just aside. But anyhow. So, I would encourage us to think about establishing a task force with a finite timeline. And one of the, you've all had wonderful suggestions about what to consider, but I'd like to focus on what Andy Getz said. He said a couple of things, that there are other alternatives to the P bid. It doesn't just have to be, if you don't benefit, you don't get to ride. So, and he said another thing that's extremely important. He said he would work for it. And I believe Andy was very instrumental in seeing that the first P bid passed. So, we've got an offer here. We've got a rough plan to pursue. And thank you, Karen, for the masterful presentation you gave. But let's take an action tonight to establish a task force with a finite time to come back for action items, possibly March or April. That gives us the opportunity, if we're going to do anything in the election, that we go ahead. But let's move on this.
Yeah, I absolutely agree. That was, that was a phenomenal idea, Joyce, and I thank you for putting it forward. And I think we need a constructive way to have that conversation and delve into the details and support.
And we want Andy Getz on that committee, believe me.
I think, I think that's really important.
So, I would move that we establish a task force to focus on this problem with the timeline of the first three months of 2014 with a report coming in April.
I have a couple of things to say. I, I agree that a task force, you know, could help. What I worry about is that what we're asking staff to investigate right now is a lot of work and that managing a task force and setting up the meetings adds another layer to that work. So far, what I've seen from staff is they've been very transparent, very communicative with the public and especially representatives from Watergate. And I just want to make sure that we do come to some kind of short-term resolution quickly and that I have a menu of choices before me. And I'm not sure that using staff time in order to kind of shape a task force is the best way to get there. Because I'm worried too about, you know, the P bid and whether or not, you know, it's going to be renewed and what solutions we're going to come up with in the meantime. Now, that said, right, if the rest of council sees value in that, I just think that there could be a potential trade-off there. Because we know that committee meetings certainly take, take up a lot of time. For me, the things that, when I'm looking at this, that stand out for me are the transportation grants, of course, although that again feels like a more long-range solution, I'm not sure how that's going to kind of stand in the gap in the next couple of years, which is one of the things that I'm worried about. Because, of course, I want to see the service maintained. I want to see the stops restored permanently. And what I really want is a bus to go to West Oakland. It seems to make a lot of sense to me. The sales tax, no. I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a good idea. Getting into the assessment district, I would have to have a better understanding of what the mechanisms behind that are. Because I think one of the things with the P bid, like Ruth mentioned, you'll see years where they were very much in the black. And that means that the people sitting on that board were taxing themselves enough to meet their expenditures and have something to put aside. If you get to a certain point, right, where the people who are making the decisions decide that they no longer have the stomach, right, to keep up with these escalating costs, then what do you do, right? Especially if these folks are not elected. So, if the assessment district mirrors that structure in any way, then I think it's just flawed. I'm not sure how we go forward with that. The supplemental shuttle service or the supplement that we were talking about, I think I shared Jennifer's concern. I'm not sure if that would in some way compete with the P bid and then threaten to kind of invalidate it if we were doing the same service. So, I'd just like to hear more from staff. Parking meter revenue could be something that I would definitely support. But in terms of filling the gap over the next couple of years or in the immediate term, right, I would be willing to listen to a solution that talked about some kind of general fund subsidy with the understanding that we could not do that long-term, right? That what we were doing was working to find a better structure, right, and a better way to continue this well into the future and to expand it, right? Any other, Nora?
Yeah. I'd just like to say in response to, I realize that we have a staff that is very heavily burdened and works very hard. But on the other hand, I look at the importance of this transit system to this city at this time. And you have to prioritize what, what really impacts most of your city, its citizens most of the time. And certainly, police, fire, and public works have a dramatic impact. But the transit system that's working now and thanks to the P bid, has been trundling along, providing fantastic service to the people of this city. It's a, for me, it's a top priority. It's one of the four most important things in the city because it directly affects every citizen in the city, to say nothing of the workers. And that's why I'd like to really ask the council again to think seriously about a three-month task force with a clearly defined, clearly defined directions. This is what we want from you. We want options. Because you're right, staff has done a lot of work on this, but we have not, except for tonight, and thanks to all you people that turned out, we have not had the input of the community. And I'm not just talking about Watergate stops here. I'm talking about stops all over town. A three-month task force is not going to be, you know, the base work has been done, but we need to get that infusion, not just from Watergate, but from the rest of the community.
No, I agree with Nora. I think we have a situation here where there's so much buzz that if we don't do something, the buzz is going to continue with our staff. So, indirectly, it's going to be, why didn't you do this?
You bet.
And what can we do? So, I think we're better off fixing the problem. It's a problem that it's going to affect, affects the whole city. So, I think it should be priority. So, I would go along with that.
I have a question. When would the, when would we next discuss the P bid again? When is it coming before me again after we give you direction this evening? Do we have a kind of timeline? Because it might be that at that stage, with a more narrow menu of options, right, that it might feel like the task force might have more structure to work with.
But there may be some groundwork and research that has happened before.
And maybe I would feel more comfortable with it at that, at that point. But I'm just curious if you have.
Right now, excuse me, right now, we were planning on coming back sometime in the first quarter, once the TMA has also done their route analysis, because I think that will help inform a bit of the conversation. And they'll discuss their budget, I believe, in January, February. So, we were planning on taking the, some of the options that you all have given us some direction on to further explore, do some more research, because we do need to do quite a bit more staff work on this. And then bring all of that back sometime, you know, I would say late February, early March.
So, I guess I would, I would support a task force, Nora. I would maybe like staff to get, you know, more research done. I would like to understand what was going on with the route optimization so that people have some material to work with right now. Because what we've told staff is to go out there and kind of do the background work. I think once they have that material to present, then in February or March, that might be a good time to go ahead and put together the task force. But, you know.
Can I, can I voice another?
Yeah.
I see the value of a task force, but I'm concerned about timing, partly because we haven't set next year's meetings, but traditionally, we don't have a meeting at the beginning of January. So, if we were arranging something, it would be late January, I assume. You know, we need to find out who's interested, et cetera, to really put it together well.
We have to post the.
Right.
Yeah.
So, my other concern, though, is what is in our control? And I don't want to give the false impression that we can promise a permanent stop at Watergate because right now, the city council can't promise that at all, right? That's not in our control. That is up to the ETMA board. And so, under the current, the current process, the current mechanism of the P bid, we have very little control. We're looking at the long-term solutions. And I don't, I don't want to say that a task force over January, February, March is going to be able to solve those problems. So, that's my other concern, that we need more background information that'll focus a discussion. But I absolutely support having a task force so we have that kind of input. Right now, the community can come to a transportation committee meeting. We do discuss Emeryville Round every now and then. We could have a special transportation committee meeting in an evening if that's helpful to make sure people can talk more informally than a city council.
I'm confused about the focus of the task force, whether it's to try to examine the operations that, that the operator is doing or whether it's just funding or, or...
Well, my intent was looking at the funding mechanism to start that process. So, that was what I was hoping. Because that's, you know, throwing out the challenge to Andy Getz. You know, he said he has some ideas. And so, my thinking is, is like, what are the ideas out there? What, you know, because business controls this right now. So, what are the ideas that they have to fix this, this issue?
Do you expect that members of the ETMA would be on the task force?
I would think so. But indirectly, you're right about one point is that we have the Christmas holidays coming up.
Yeah, the holidays.
And so, I met you, you back out a couple of weeks. And so, that is putting a lot of pressure. So.
Do we have a, oh, did you have a motion, Nora?
Well, yeah, I would suggest, I would propose the formation of a task force and, let's see, and have staff bring back the composition and then post, you know, the names or the application forms. And so, in the January 17th meeting, we start that ball rolling with a finite time that they would be able to come back and give a report by April. We're, you know, the time constraints here are very serious. 2016 is right outside the door. And this is a vital, we all agree it's a vital service. We don't have to beat that into the ground. But we need not only our very wonderful competent staff, but we need to hear from the people in the community also and the business community.
Correct.
So, so let's start the ball rolling on January 17th when we come back and start the whole process.
I would go along with that.
That's a motion.
Because we have to start, yeah, and I'd second the motion.
Motion in a second. Roll call on this, please.
Councilmember Brinkman.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Wes.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Atkins.
I, we already have three. So, I actually don't think it's, it's the wisest thing to do it at this, with that timing. So, but, but we already have three. So.
Yeah. I mean, already having three, I honestly, I would have said that I would like to wait, right? Because I think we've just really put a lot on staff's plate.
Exactly.
In order to investigate.
I have the same reason.
The possibilities, right? And that's my concern.
So, can I suggest that, I think it may not be January 17. It might be January.
21st.
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 Our first meeting in 2014, that we consider appointing folks to a task force, which by the end of February, staff will have the information put together. And there will be some, just a meeting in February that will, you know, kind of get the task force going. We will have that information. I know it's a lot of pressure on staff, but it's important. And it, it needs to have a quick timeline if we're looking at putting something on a ballot in 2014. And that's why I don't want to wait. And I think we'll see what staff can accomplish.
Mr. Biddle?
Yeah. Yeah, I just want to confirm with the council that currently what we have is a, is a system that's run by a private operator. And we're, so as we look at trying to provide funding mechanisms for this system, that we are continuing to consider it as a privately-run shuttle. Because if we are looking at creating a whole public system and a publicly-run bus system, we are talking about something much different.
That's right.
That's right.
At a much different cost.
Not my intent.
So, as we, I just want to confirm with the council that in terms of what we're looking at relative to funding mechanisms, we are looking at those that would continue to run a private system. And that may otherwise constrain some of the options that you have in terms of those funding. That's all.
With that understanding.
Yeah. And it's hard because it feels like we're slapping Band-Aids on something that might otherwise have a different, a different way or a more optimal way to provide public transportation, you know, in this region. What, do we have 26 or 27 transit agencies? And surprise, surprise, it's hard to find coordination between them.
Well, I, I think the P bid mechanism, that setup, still continues to be a very viable way of providing a significant amount of funding for, for the shuttle. And so, you know, that's certainly a big component of what I think the city can look at in terms of going forward. And if there are other mechanisms it wants to look at to help supplement that, be it some of these other funds and that we were talking about, that's something else that we can certainly explore as well.
I would just like to ask staff to look at the other shuttles in the county and how they're funded. San Leandro, the Oakland Broadway are two. You know, Union City has a shuttle. So, just look at the other shuttles.
Right. The Air District, for example, provides funding for some of those.
But that only is good for two years.
I have one last question, one thing that was raised. I think it was Joe Letts's comment about the mitigations that were put in place for projects over the years and how Emeryville Round was an essential component of those mitigations and their EIRs. If Emeryville Round were to go away, which I don't want it to happen, but what would happen for a project whose mitigations are, the foundation is on having that service in place?
Well, we'd have to look at each, each individual one on a case-by-case basis. I know, you know, some of the older projects were obligated to provide their own shuttle, such like, I believe it's the East Bay Bridge Shopping Center was required to provide a shopper shuttle on the weekends, if I'm not mistaken. So, we'd have to look at each individual project and determine whether they, what they need to do in order to continue to comply with their mitigation measures. So.
So, we continue to monitor and enforce those measures?
Yeah, we would have to.
Okay.
And, and I think Karen indicated in her presentation that the council did adopt a policy resolution some years ago, essentially providing that to the extent a project was contributing to the Emeryville Round that they were otherwise satisfying their obligations under their project approvals.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Now, don't leave. We're over another hour or so. You can stay here with us.
We're almost there.
Yeah. Make sure that we stay awake now. Come on.
Is there a city manager's report?
Okay, so, let's get back to item 6.1. This is a public hearing. Let me read this very, should I read the entire title? Okay, no need to read the entire title. Thank you, Mr. Biddle. Okay.
Welcome.
Item 6.1.
If you want to wait a couple of minutes, let the room clear. But before I get into it, let me hand out a revised resolution that I've redlined. And there are copies that I will leave up here at the dais for those in the public who want it. And let me give you each one.
Redlined? Do you mean green?
Oh, green.
I'm sorry. I should have given a break. I forgot about that. I count on you to remind me.
All right. Please don't all stand. So, this public hearing item relates to the city's Development Impact Fee Program. Previously, in the past few years, the council approved three contracts with consulting firms to undertake studies in support of amending the existing fee for transportation facilities, as well as looking at the possible establishment of new fees for affordable housing, park and recreation facilities, and government. park and recreation facilities, and government facilities. These fee studies, once they're completed and available for the public consumption, they will be presented to several city committees, before they are then presented to the planning commission and the city council for its consideration. This process, we anticipate, will unfold during the spring and summer of 2014. The item before you tonight is for the council to establish a policy that all discretionary land use applications that are approved by the city will be subject to the development impact fees if they are adopted by the council, subject to certain limitations. First and foremost, let me be clear that notwithstanding what you may have heard from various development interests via emails and what have you that you've received over the last couple of days, because I've seen some of them, that the sky is not falling. Similarly, the rules as they exist today, relative to the legal ability of the city to impose newly enacted fees on development projects, is also not changing by adoption of this policy, with one exception. And that exception relates to the development projects that may file an application for a tentative map or a vesting tentative map. In general, in California, a development project only obtains a vested right to proceed with their project without having to comply with new rules that a city may enact very late in the development process. The California law provides that a developer obtains a vested right upon, one, securing a building permit, two, performing substantial work in good faith reliance on that building permit, and three, incurring substantial liability. So, in the timeline of a development project, a developer obtains a vested right very late in the process. So, they would have filed an application with the city for the various entitlements that they need, they would have undertaken environmental review in accordance with SEQA, the project will have been considered by the various committees that we have, the project will have been considered by the planning commission and the council if applicable. And then, they would have, after that, then secured a building permit, and then they would have undertaken work and incurred liability, and it's way here at the end where they then finally obtain a vested right, protecting them from any changes in the rules that the city might impose. This resolution before you doesn't change that rule for the vast majority of development permits that the city processes. There are exceptions to this rule. Government Code Section 66474.2 provides that in determining whether to approve an application for a tentative map, the city may only apply those rules in effect at the time the application is complete. So, the determination of whether an application for a tentative map is complete is much sooner in the development process. The application process obviously precedes the environmental review and the formal approval process that I had just talked about. So, from staff's perspective, there's a concern that certain development sites within the city could come in, file an application for a tentative map or a vesting tentative map in the near future, and thereby exempt their development projects from having to pay the fees that the city may choose to adopt as part of the fee studies that have been initiated by the city council. I'll also just note, there's another exception where the city could agree to a different timeline in the context of a negotiated development agreement, but that is an agreement that the city council itself would have to approve, and so you don't have to worry about that sort of exception coming up and inviting you, because a private party cannot force the council to enter into a development agreement. So, the issue of concern is these vesting tentative maps, but Government Code Section 66474.2 Subsection B allows cities to push this timeline as it pertains to imposition of new fees as to a tentative map, to the point in time that the map is actually approved. So, you're talking about a point in time, sort of switching it from when the tentative map is deemed to be complete to when it is approved, so it would have gone through this environmental review process and this other entitlement process. But there are conditions before, that you have to comply with before you can sort of push that timeline back, and that's that the city initiates proceedings to change the rules by way of an ordinance resolution or motion, and that the city holds a notice public hearing regarding the nature of the proposed change. So, the purpose of this item tonight is to change the rules as it relates to a tentative map. It does not change the rules, as I say, as they presently exist for any other development application. Thus, by adoption of this resolution, the city would be able to impose the new fees on a tentative map or vesting tentative map that are enacted by the city up until the point in time that a map is approved, as opposed to when the map application is deemed complete. I provided to you a revised resolution, during the day, I had some conversations with council for certain of development interests in the city, and so, relative to the resolution first, I'll just note that I just sort of, with respect to the title, I tried to shorten it a little bit. And then, in the first page, I added some information regarding the impact fee studies that were initiated by the council, because some questions were raised by council for some of the development interests as to whether the city had in fact, quote, "initiated" the proceedings in accordance with provisions of the government code, so I wanted to add some recitals in here to be clear that the city council did in fact, adopt resolutions approving these contracts to initiate proceedings, to modify the traffic impact fee, and consider imposition of an affordable housing fee, a park and rec fee, and a government facilities fee. And so, that first resolve that I've added was just really to affirm that in fact, that was your intent in adopting those resolutions and those contracts, was to in fact, initiate a process to amend the existing fee program and consider adoption of a new fees for these other programs. And then, the other amendment is the, near the end of the second resolved, which is to clarify that, again, as I said, the fees, new fees would not be applicable to a development project relative, if a, prior to the enactment, a vesting tentative map had been approved, and then likewise, I made some reference to the fact that the council could itself obviously provide for different rules pursuant to the development agreement if you so choose. So, with that, I would recommend that you open the public hearing and consider any testimony from parties that are here, and if you have any questions at that point, be certainly willing to answer them.
Okay. So, the public hearing is open?
Hello, Ken Bukowski. I have a few concerns about this. It seems like you're inverting the process. I mean, why don't you go ahead and decide you're going to adopt the fees, and then adopt the resolution that, you know, enforces the collection? And then, with the subdivision map, I mean, if somebody applies a subdivision map for a project, and then they don't get approval, I mean, how does that factor into the timeline? Would somebody be paying those fees and then maybe not get approval, and then have a subdivision that wouldn't be necessarily applicable if the project didn't go forward? So, I think when you're going to do a subdivision map, it would be after your project is approved, and then you know you're going to subdivide it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Asher and council. Bob Cantor with the Emeryville Chamber of Commerce. We are quite concerned about this, and as I hope some of you know, just to put this in context, those who've been around longer, our Chamber of Commerce is not the knee-jerk chamber that automatically opposes everything, and our history is so clear on this, it's wonderful. We have supported the Measure A for the school tax unanimously, our board twice, both Measure As, when, as we talked about the P-Bid tonight, our chamber supported the Emery round and the P-Bid. Most of those property payers are on our Board of Directors. When the utility users' tax had to go before, and you had to get reapproval, that's several years ago, we unanimously supported that and others. We do not automatically are knee-jerk opposed to tax or fee increases. We do have a concern here, and I want to compliment Mr. Biddle on his very thorough and very detailed report, as he always does. That's his job, and he did a good job of it. This is our concern. It was discussed this evening in the, excuse me, in the Emery round discussion about the regional approaches and looking at things regionally. That's what we always do. In past years, this city has gotten to where it's gotten, in part because you've been better than the competition on both sides of us. That might be changing a little bit now. The cities around us are getting their act together a little more. There is intense competition for the biotechnology industry, the healthcare industry that we're trying to attract. I'm working with Helen to try to attract and retain some of these businesses here. The city of Berkeley has a wonderful new young city manager, she's just like our new city manager here, and she is sharp as heck, and they are going after these businesses. San Leandro is taking a much more aggressive approach, even Oakland, which frankly, I've never had much, I'll say, respect for their approach to economic development, is getting its act together. We need to think about this, and Mr. Biddle's right, the sky's not falling, but we still need to think about it. Developers, look at this. Even just proposing this, and it's going to go to committees and go to the planning commission, we understand that, nothing's going to be decided this evening, but we're very concerned, and we're concerned for our competitive basis. This city has been sharper than the competition, we want to keep it that way. You can never let your guard down. You never hit an apex where you can just stop. You always have to keep looking forward and getting better. It's part of our economic strategy documents we've produced, too. You've both seen them, most of you have seen them, and mostly have liked what's in them. So, we just want to, as you consider this tonight, please keep that in mind. Watch what our competitors are doing, and we need to think about that as you go forward tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Asher and city council members. My name is Anna Shimko from the law firm of Sedgwick, LLP, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Madison Marquette, the developer of the Bay Street project. I believe you got a letter earlier today from Cedric Young, who's here in the audience. As I'm sure you know, there's nothing more paramount to developers of property than certainty. Certainty requires bright lines with clear expectations, and not amorphous time periods with open-ended and unquantified obligations. I appreciate the fact that Mr. Biddle did adjust the resolution some here this evening in order to reflect the law with respect to vesting tentative maps. However, if the purpose of this ordinance is merely to capture changes that occur between the submission of a map application and the approval of a map, then what I would urge you to do is remove Items 2 and 3 in the last resolved clause on Page 3 of the resolution. Because what this particular resolution does is impose, is allow for the potential imposition of development impact fees that are enacted after building permit issuance, after construction has started on projects, to retroactively go back and impose fees that are newly enacted after building permit application. That's simply not a viable proposal for property owners, and it's unworkable for cities. As to property owners, there's an obvious paramount financing concern. It's simply not feasible that lenders would allow development to proceed with potential plans, given that there would be an open checkbook for fees to come later. In addition, it would be unworkable for the city to have to try and establish when common law vested rights are obtained, when a developer has done substantial work, and what that means, when substantial funds have been expended, and what that means. It's a potential recipe for discord and confusion, where cohesion and certainty are warranted. So, I would urge you to eliminate Items 2 and 3 in the resolved paragraph, such that fees would only be required that are in place at the time that one pulls a building permit, and no later than that. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public? Yeah, uh-huh.
Jeff White, Avalon Bay. Avalon Bay is a public company. We have one property under contract to develop in the city now, and be going through the approval process over the next few months, and we are always looking for new options. I would like to thank council for that very succinct summary, because I think captures what our concerns are. I'm not sure if the solution is right. Our problem, or our challenge is having such a short amount of time to digest this, with having really traumatic implications, is what she described, is life-threatening to any development. So, maybe we've misunderstood it, and we need more clarification, maybe it's a talk with our attorney, but we, at this point in time, would say we have severe concerns about moving forward with that change. And again, maybe we just don't fully understand it, but we're not able to support it as of today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else to be heard? No? Okay, and with that, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll have discussion from...
Well, I'm a little concerned that we got all these markups this evening, so I meant, I'm just concerned that some developers might not have got them, because they just received them this evening, so I'd like to just hold this over till next meeting, and let everybody make sure that they have seen it.
I'm not supportive of that, because I feel that it doesn't necessarily add anything substantive, it's just giving background information about where, how this process originated. So, it's just, it's simply documenting the history of the process. So, I'm very comfortable with the changes that have been made here. Do we have other comments?
I have a question for Michael.
Yeah, Nora.
On the first page of your staff report, at the very end, would you define for me substantial liability? How do you measure that?
How do I measure that?
Well, what I'm saying is, that's kind of loosey-goosey. Substantial liability.
It's what, I mean, that is just a recital, what California law is. I am using the mic.
Oh, yeah. He's talking to Nora, I think.
So, this is coming out of the state code, substantial liability?
No, it's actually more, it's common law, and so, it's more decisional law.
Well, it's pretty loosey-goosey to me.
So, it's going to, it's going to depend on the individual facts of each individual case, but this, as I say, is a recital, what existing law is. We're not changing what the law already is. So, with respect to Avalon Bay, the city could, under existing law, impose a new fee after they've already obtained a building permit. Now, whether they have undertaken substantial work or incurred substantial liability, that's more of a factual determination that would have to be made on a case-by-case basis. What Ms. Shimko has suggested in terms of modifications to the resolution is a change in what is existing California law. Certainly, I understand that it creates a more bright-line rule for everyone involved, but I guess part of my concern is that we have had instances in this city, and I'm sure it's nothing unique to Emeryville, where somebody will come in and pull a building permit, and they will sit on the permit and not do any work. And so, in that type of situation, that would clearly give the city the ability to say, yeah, we may have issued you a building... yeah, we may have issued you a building permit, but you haven't undertaken substantial work in reliance on that permit and incurred substantial liability. And yeah, is it, is it, you know, somewhat nebulous, and is it a fact-by-fac, case-by-case determination of the facts? Yes. But, you know, I think that's something that the city can and should reserve to itself, rather than just creating a bright-line rule that says, you get your building permit, and then you open yourself up to people sort of rushing to the, to the door, to the finish line, just to get their building permit without any real intent of undertaking work in a timely fashion.
Thank you, Michael. I have another question.
Yes.
Charlie. Charlie, give me a ballpark figure on what percentage, say you have a $50 million project, what percentage of that would be go-to fees?
You're saying the valuation of the project is 50 million? Oh, wow. I, that, I don't know. Off the top of my head, I mean.
Not at 11.
Probably five or six million, I would guess, but I don't really, I don't really know off the top of my head. I mean, total fees, you're talking about?
Total fees.
Building permit fees, traffic impact fees, art fee, school fees, building, state building commission fees, all those different things. Well, the building permit fee is 0.8% of valuation, and then the other fees are a percent of the building permit fee, and the other fees are a percent of the valuation, and I don't know what it all adds up to, but, you know, I would guess maybe 5% or 10% of the valuation, something like that.
Okay, Jeff, what do you say?
I think, I thought about five or more percent, yeah.
Yeah, okay. What do you say, Helen?
Well, we have done some preliminary work on the impact fee studies, and we have looked at fees in other surrounding communities as a percent of valuation of projects, and it's comes, just the impact fees alone are closer to 5%.
Of valuation.
Okay.
Of valuation.
Thank you very much. That's what I figured, but thank you all for the input.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Of staff. Do all new projects submit applications for a vesting tentative map?
No, they do not.
Do you know how many do?
I, I don't have any sense of that, but my concern is that a project like Sherwin-Williams will, perhaps the marketplace.
And, and so this measure that we're considering is really, it's only kind of a placeholder until our NEXA study and traffic impact fees are completed and in place.
Correct.
Because once they're in place, then any project that comes forward, whether it has a tentative map or it's a building permit, would be, those fees would be applicable.
Yeah.
So this is, and we don't know exactly how long that'll take. We're hoping to hear back early in 2014. I feel like it's been a year, I guess, some of these contracts that they're working on.
And so the real concern is to be able to impose the fees that the council may choose to adopt on a project that might otherwise choose to obtain or seek a vesting tentative map that are in place at the time that the map is approved, as opposed to when they submit the application and that application is deemed complete, which, in the grand scheme of things, is probably somewhere in the neighborhood of about a year's difference.
Between when the application's complete and when the application's approved?
Yeah.
Because you're talking about this formal process that.
Well, you have to go through environmental review, all the entitlement process of public hearings, et cetera. And so for a project, say, the size of Sherwin-Williams, you're probably looking at about a year.
So, and, and what do you think about the suggestion of removing Items Two and Three from the, the three? These are all and, it's not or, right, for Items One, Two, and Three?
Right, they're all ands. I mean, I, I understand the, the point of view from the development side, that it provides some greater clarity, that at the time they, they pull their building permit, that they will know what the, the applicable fees are. So I, I appreciate that. But at the same time, that is a, the suggestion that has been made is really revision to what existing law is. And so I don't see any need for the city to, to necessarily do that. I think staff has always shown good judgment in the future, or in the past, I should say, about application of fees, and I expect they will continue to do that in the future. And I don't think we're going to sort of willy-nilly start imposing, trying to impose fees on projects where they're clearly well under construction. You know, there might, there could be instances where, you know, it's a question mark, and we'll have to, to vet that out. But I would hate to give up that right of the city, as I don't see any need for you to do so at this point in time, because that sort of risk, that development risk already exists. It already exists for all these individuals sitting here tonight. And what we're trying to do is close this time period as it relates to a vesting tentative map. That's really all we're trying to accomplish.
So I, I, I see our vulnerability, just as we're waiting, and, and it's hard to be patient, frankly. I mean, when we agreed to move ahead with the NEXA study and the traffic impact fee, I just feel impatient. I can't believe it takes this long to have them come forward, because this is critical in terms of our future funding with redevelopment gone. And so I'm in favor of passing this this evening.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, it is.
I second.
You want to take a roll call vote on this?
Yeah, let's call it.
And I assume that's the resolution as modified?
As modified, please. And I appreciate the, the clarity. I have to say, this is a little bit hard for me to understand, too, when I first read through it. And I also want to appreciate you noticing all of the significant developers and interests. I know that you felt like you, you got the notice late, but it's an improvement that you were noticed. I'm just saying.
You got it about the same time you received it.
Yeah, I was wondering what happened to this item.
Councilmember Brickman?
No.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember West?
Aye.
Councilmember, sorry, Vice Mayor Atkins?
No.
And Mayor Asher?
Aye.
Okay. All right, we're now on to administrative item 8.2, discussion of community advisory body appointments for terms starting January 1.
Give me one second.
Yes.
I have an idea. Let's hold this over for when Ruth's not here, and then we'll appoint Ruth to all the committees.
That's not fair.
It's really not. That would be me.
I thought it was a great idea.
Why, are you tired?
It must have happened. I guess I got transferred one time, because I was in California.
Okay, Mayor and Council, this isn't, every year, the council reviews the advisory bodies and appointments that are being, the terms are ending for that year. And after receiving direction from council about what committees, if any, will be eliminated due to their work being done, or any changes in membership, or, and plus, the new appointments or reappointments for terms are beginning January 1 of the new year, staff will come back on December 17 with that legislation for your adoption. So this is to give us direction on what to bring back to you.
I support terminating the Showmount Street-Pow Street Bridge Improvement.
I do, too.
Ad hoc committee. That's the first.
That we accept all these recommendations here. Terminate the Showmount, institute set in membership, and make appointments.
So one of the questions about setting the membership, if Attachment A into the staff report, it's, looks like this, light green?
I like that. Thank you.
Gave all the different voting memberships, and one of the issues that have come recently is that the process to fill vacancies has gotten rather cumbersome, particularly the part in which before every vacant, every unscheduled vacancy is noticed to come to the committee and asking, should the membership be changed, and come to the council to make the, you know, it's becoming a three- or four-month process to fill a, a, an scheduled vacancy. And it's not just a staff concern, but we've heard concerns from committee members, too, that it really hurts their work when they've got vacancies for so long. So we are recommending that there'll be set terms. These are the terms that are here today. There are two, three, actually. There's the Bike Ped Committee, the Economic Development Advisory Committee, the Park Avenue District Advisory Committee, and the Public Art Committee, that each have even number voting members. And it has been requested, for example, by Public Art, Public Art, that they have an odd number. So staff would recommend that, that it happen by attrition, essentially, that the next unscheduled vacancy. Just don't fill it. Just, just don't fill it. Right. And of course, would, would bring you either an information memo or information report, we would let you know. But that would be for those, and we would suggest reducing them by one and doing it by attrition. And I think the only one, so the Park Avenue, does have a difference between residential and business members, so I don't know if I could have some direction on to make it three business members, to make it five residents, just what that attrition would be. Or see who.
See who leave first. Kind of a waiting game.
Yeah, I don't think that's a very big decision.
We, we can do that, because I think for Bike Ped, most of the members are, just live or work, and, and so is with the Public Art Committee. So we'll just leave it up to attrition. Okay?
But for the idea of having a maximum membership of nine, I think that would change this dynamic, too. It's not just the odd number, but it's also, you know, if you have 16 people on a committee, it just does not function in the same way as a nine-member committee. So I, I'm in favor of, of saying there's a maximum of nine for any committee, but the problem is that the council then, you know, we, we like to appoint everybody who applies, and we can't do that.
We do.
It, it makes harder decisions for us in understanding who, you know, frankly, I think our application system is flawed in that we don't know a lot necessarily, unless we reach out to each individual and talk with them, which I used to do and don't have the time always to do now, and kind of vet them and, and know. Otherwise, yeah, you're appointing the person you know, which is not the best, sorry, not the best committee, necessarily. So I, I like the idea of a maximum, but it means, obviously, for the council, a big change in the way we appoint people. And are we willing to do that?
I think we should strive towards that.
I think we should.
Okay.
And directing people toward, you know, vacant spots where they might be interested in serving.
So the direction is, is to kind of through attrition, try to shrink those committees down tonight. It may take a while, as you can understand.
Yeah.
For some of the committees, anyway.
Right.
We will do that.
We have a motion.
Okay, so then.
Is there enough on the council who agree with that? I guess so. Three?
Three, yeah. We have three who agree.
Yep.
This will be coming back as part, I will put.
You have two or three days to put that together, right?
It's going to be.
Yesterday.
Yesterday?
And I'm, I have a plane to catch tomorrow, so it's going to be very interesting. So then the next thing is looking at the appointments. If you look at your staff report, Attachment B has the different committees that have what I call scheduled vacancies, and those are committees that have terms that end at the end of this month. Not all do. We, last year, the council switched to your terms for, for, for most committees. There's a few exceptions, Planning Commission being one, Commission on Aging being the other, being the other. And so the Child Development, Commission on Aging, Finance Advisory, Housing Advisory, and Planning Art Committee all have terms that end. There is a, I think, a summary, Attachment B, and the yellow indicates the, the terms that are ending. If there is a name in the yellow, that is an incumbent that has asked to be reappointed. If it says vacant and it's yellow, it means it's a term that ends this year, but there's no one currently in the seat. The past month or so, given the cumbersomeness of the vacancy process right now, if it was ending this year, it was, we'll just wrap it up in, into this process. There are a few committees that actually, in the past really month, have had some unscheduled, that, that has some unscheduled vacancies, but until I got direction, I was kind of holding off on that. So I will look at those in terms of shrinking those committees, and those then may be the first that we have an opportunity to shrink. And that's the Bike Ped Committee, the Child Development Advisory Committee, the Housing Advisory Committee, and the Park Avenue District Advisory Committee. All have scheduled, have vacancies. That would be for terms ending next year. So rather than going through with those, that recruitment, those would be the first to essentially be not filled through attrition based upon your direction tonight, if I'm correct.
I have a quick question, just to clarify. I'm looking at the ECDC committee, and did you say that people whose names are highlighted asked to be reappointed?
They either asked to be reappointed or have not heard from them?
Okay, because I know that Amy Simpson does not want to be reappointed, but her name is highlighted.
I was hesitant to decide for someone that they did not want to be appointed, and I assume that if someone got reappointed.
She doesn't have a child there anymore.
Yeah, she's not a parent anymore there.
Yeah.
We would find that out when they got their reappointment left.
That's right.
Okay.
You can just scare yourself. But for example, I'm looking at that one, too, and.
Amy Simpson?
Yes.
Okay. Well, this is one that is at 10 now, so nine would be one less person.
It's at 10 with the council liaison, who's not a voting member.
True.
So I think it's at nine.
Okay. I will make sure that if it's less than nine, we will continue on with the recruitment.
Well, but, so then we do have some committees, like the Finance Advisory Committee, where it's only seven. It's actually five voting members. And does the council want to have everyone at nine, or just keep that one at five?
What say you, Nora, on finance?
We're trying to simplify this.
Yeah, I know.
So let's just say nine is the top number, if there are other committees.
I was going to make a request for one to go up to 10, or 11, so.
Which one?
Get a grip, Kurt.
Hey, I like people, I like more people at the meetings, especially in Public Art.
Oh, there you go.
Okay, so I will make sure that, I will check to make sure that it's only those committees that are higher than nine voting members, that attrition, that will be in the staff report.
Okay.
Okay. So, so in addition, there are a, a few new applicants. So for example, for the Child Development Center, that is currently nine, at nine voting members. There are three vacancies, and two, one is for a parent, one is for a parent with a child with estate subsidy, and one's a business member. And there is, I guess, sorry.
There's another parent vacancy of Amy Simpson.
Right, there's a parent, sorry, there's a parent.
Approved someone last meeting.
Oh, did they?
We approved a new parent, Sana, right?
Right.
Ah, yes.
That's not on there.
Okay, so that's the new parent. Oh, that's the one for 2014. So there is a, a business position for that one, and we do have one business rep applicant.
But with Amy gone, do we have another parent there?
And we would have another parent, yes.
Okay.
So are we appointing tonight David Kritzberg and Corrigan Malloy?
I would come back with legislation, but I would put that, I would put those names in the resolution that comes back to.
Okay, all right, yeah.
Okay, so Corrigan and Kritzberg, okay? So Corrigan and Kritzberg, okay? And Commission on Aging, there are two, there are two people who would like to be reappointed, and one person who is a new applicant. So Lily Mosley and Judy Osser are incumbents with terms ending this month, and Ray Westergaard is the new applicant.
I'm concerned that he didn't state why he's interested in serving on that particular body. His, I think his application isn't complete.
Well, they already have nine members, so there's not a vacancy on that committee.
Unless someone is not coming back. Right? We generally don't kick people off committees when they've served us, right?
Well, as far as I know, Lily and Judy still want to be on the committee.
Okay. All right. So I would just not...
There's no vacancy.
Consider, yeah, a vacancy.
For the Finance Advisory Committee, there is one term that, well, there's one term that is resident, that's Fran Cottell, and she is interested in being reappointed. And one business vacancy, which we do not have an application for at this time. So the only...
We should tell our Chamber of Commerce to let people know.
Right.
We can do that. So Fran Cottell is the only applicant for that position. It would be a reappointment.
Okay.
Okay? Then the Housing Advisory Committee, there are one, two, three, four community members whose terms are ending. They all wish to be reappointed. And there is one new applicant also for that committee, and that's Flavanna Rogers, and that committee is...
Big. It's at 13.
Is large.
Right. Well, it's only 12 actually, if Ruth is not a voting member.
There's no vacancy on that.
Yeah, I'm not a vote. There's no vacancy, and there's, but there's vacant.
There's one vacancy, but that would keep it at 13.
Right, so we're trying to...
Yeah, we're trying to...
No, if you don't fill the vacancy, then it's 12.
Now it's 12?
Yep.
We hang out the sign.
But 12, which is an odd number with the liaison. It's an odd number.
Now it's an odd number.
Yeah, which is good.
And then last is Public Art. There are four, four terms up this year, and all four of the incumbents wish to be reappointed. And there's also applicants for four new, for, 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 there are other, sorry, there's four additional applications.
But there's no vacancy.
But there's no vacancy.
I'd say Adam.
What?
I like where people make...
It's back into the bad habits.
I have bad habits everywhere. When it comes to Public Art, more the better.
And this is, this committee is at nine. This committee is at nine. And for people who are not appointed, we do send letters thanking them for their interest and saying that we keep their applications on file for one year.
Right.
And that we will notice them of upcoming vacancies, and we do call them.
Okay.
Very good.
So that's all the direction I need on that. Thank you.
Can I ask one question, which is the, I'm not seeing it on the list. The Park Avenue District Advisory Committee, right now on our, at the end of our agenda, we have body vacancies, which I appreciate having there. And it says that there is one business representative vacancy on the Park Avenue District, and I don't see it on your report, and I'm wondering if that one was filled and wasn't taken off the agenda, or if there's something, it's just an inconsistency. Maybe you could figure that out.
I believe if you look at the roster, which I think is Attachment D, under Park Avenue District Advisory Committee, you'll see there is a vacancy for a business representative.
And is that one we needed attrition on?
Well, I believe there were 11 members, not including the council liaison.
Oh, right. So we do need attrition. So we won't, let's not fill that vacancy.
That vacant, sorry, that vacancy was for one of the terms that end next year. That's why it wasn't included for action today. But that would be one that would be taken off. So that's the direction that I need for that.
Onto 8.3.
What about 8.2?
Yeah, 8.2.
Oh.
8.2.
That was 8.2 that we just did.
No, no.
So 8.3 is the city council non-voting liaisons to the various city advisory bodies. And of course, since you just eliminated the Shellmount Street, Powell Street Bridge Ad Hoc Task Force, there is no appointment needed for that one. There is a summary page of all the different city council subcommittees, as well as the community advisory body, and who is the incumbent at this point. This is the opportunity for council to direct staff on which council members will be retaining their liaisons and which council members may be making a change or stepping down.
I need to step down from the B-PAC. I just, I need one less meeting.
Now that you're mayor.
And while I love the B-PAC, they have very lively meetings, they're a terrific group. With that one meeting monthly, that would, that would just help me a lot if I had to not go to that one so often.
Well, I would be interested in serving on that committee at the risk of committing myself to one more thing. But I know that there is a subcommittee of the Transportation Committee, which I also serve on, and I don't know if, if...
That might be useful.
It'd be perfect.
Yeah, that's useful, Jennifer.
Yeah, that's, that's great.
That's good, that's good.
Okay. Something else will have to go, but...
I'm happy to continue serving on the ECDC Advisory Committee.
Well, I need some more time at night too. So does anybody want parking recs?
I'll take it.
Okay, thank you.
But I noticed it kind of says meets as needed or something. I'm not sure when that, it meets.
It meets...
Every other month.
No, it meets every, every month.
Oh, it meets every month.
Yeah.
It says every other month.
That's not right.
We should just fix that.
No, I think the roster says every other month, but...
Right, but the committee decided to meet once a month because they had planning to do.
So when, when, when does it meet? Wait, I have to find it here.
Same time the Gilman JPA meets.
Wednesday of the month.
Every other month, day times every...
Believe it's the third Wednesday of the month.
What day of the week does it meet?
Wednesday, Wednesday, third Wednesday at, I think it's 5:30 at the Rec Center.
Okay. I have to start putting that in my calendar.
I'd like to remain on the Finance Committee. Who else wants to do that?
And I guess I'd like to pull my name out of the public works since...
We've reached 11:30. We have to vote if we're going to continue?
No, sir.
Move to continue.
11:27.
We're going to be done.
Should we go down each, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and see who's on, right? Let's, let's do this systematically. So the city council subcommittees?
Yeah, which page are you on? Are they all listed?
I'm on 175, Attachment D.
Thank you.
And so if we're reviewing all of the subcommittees and deciding who's going to serve on these, can, can we just...
Have you looked at 199?
Yeah, go right down.
Down?
199?
199?
Okay.
Do we go with 199?
199. It just suddenly got very quiet. I want to make sure we're not all just sleeping.
Is that the electronic 199 or the written page?
It's 205 electronically. Okay. So are we having no change to the Community Preservation Committee? That's right now Asher and Davis.
Fine with me.
It's good by me. Public Safety Committee, Brinkman and Davis?
Fine with me.
Okay. Public Works Committee, Brinkman and Davis?
Fine with me.
I'll try to attend occasionally. Okay.
All right, all right.
Maurice gets so tired of me.
Is that the one that we need to add some residents to, some other people? It was suggested a meeting a few, a few months ago.
They're all, it's always open to the public.
It's always open.
That's true.
Technology Committee, Asher and Davis, I'm fine?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Transportation Committee?
Yep.
Okay. The, the B-PAC will now be, Jennifer, I can remain on the CDC Commission on Aging?
Okay.
Okay. Economic Development?
Okay.
Okay. Finance Advisory Committee, I'd like to remain on that. So with Nora, okay. Housing Committee, Ruth?
I'm fine with that.
Okay. The Marina Committee?
Okay.
Okay. Park Avenue District Advisory Committee?
Okay.
Yep. And Parks and Rec is now going to be Ruth?
Yeah.
Okay. And Mayor Brinkman wants a bigger, better Public Art Committee, so you can continue to serve on that.
Good job.
I just want to publicly say how much I appreciate all the committees that you serve on, Nora, because I don't know how you do it.
Yeah, I don't know how you do it either.
Yeah, thank you, Nora.
I don't, I don't have little kids at home, and I don't have a full-time job, so there you go.
That helps.
That's how it works. I don't know how you four do it.
Well, thank you.
Okay, now on to 8.4.
Anytime we want to consolidate a few of these committees into one. And we're done with that, okay. Regional bodies.
Regional committees on 8.4.
So the, the last part of this are the regional committees that the council is on, and there is a, a summary for those as well. In addition, there are, Jim Golden's term on the mosquito abatement district is up this year, and he has asked to be reappointed. And, and all the others are council appointments. And just to note that the Alameda County Housing Authority commissions for a four-year term, which is a, which is a, is a council member represented position.
That's so random.
I'd move to reappoint Jim Golden.
I'd second it.
Yeah, he...
He loves his bugs.
Loves the mosquitoes.
He attends all those, he needs to go all the way down to Hayward.
Second, third, fourth.
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you, Jim.
Yes, thank you.
So the Alameda County Housing Authority, the term ends this year, it looks like, although you've not held it for four years, but...
Right. I've held it for two. I'd like to continue serving.
Okay, I would recommend that.
Why don't we just go down from the top and...
Okay, so AC Transit.
Oh, that's a good one. That never meets.
I think that one should meet. I feel like with all these conversations we've had about transportation, so...
You should have it meet again?
If anybody wants to relinquish their non-meeting position on that, I'd be happy to serve. I would also probably call for a meeting, so...
Jennifer, I'll relinquish it.
Okay, so...
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so it'll be Atkins and West?
Yep.
Okay? The A-Bag, Ruth?
Yeah, yeah, if someone wants to take that from me, that'd be quite all right with me.
I might, I might be interested in that one.
You are?
Kurt?
That's yours.
Okay, that's Kurt's.
Oh, good, good, good.
Alameda County Associated Community, that's city manager, right?
Oh, please.
That's, yeah.
That's a mess.
That doesn't have to meet again.
Right. Okay.
That's the city manager and the city attorney.
Yeah, that's where, that's who's...
I don't know if you know that story, the burning.
Yes, okay. Alameda County Fire Department?
I'll take it.
Okay. Kurt will do that again. I'll serve on the Housing Authority, ACTC?
I'll, I'll serve as Kurt's alternate on the fire again, unless someone, unless someone, unless someone wants to do...
We're having our party on Thursday night.
Yeah, I know. I'm busy.
You're in it for the party?
There's a, there's a lot of, there's a lot of parties happening.
That's cool. That's really cool.
ACTC, did we just go over that? Yes.
I'd like to continue.
Oh, yeah, good job.
Kurt, you want to remain the alternate?
I'd be fine.
Okay.
You've got to be really strong on that committee. Try and win some...
Get our 1%.
It's, it's a setup.
Okay.
The Alameda County Lead Abatement Program, which changed its name.
Yes. Yeah, you need to change the, the title to the, to the Healthy Homes Department.
Great. Oh, Joyce is appointed.
Oh, Joyce, I talked to her tonight. She wants to be reappointed, and I have the paperwork to do that.
Okay.
Good.
Very good. We said Jim is sticking with the mosquitoes, the waste management.
Yeah, and I would like, in the description on that page, that you actually put the word "stop waste" because that's how it's identified in some contexts, and I think the public would understand it better. And there are a few minor adjustments to the committee structure, et cetera, that I'd be happy to go over with you. Like, there's a PNA committee, it changed, and there's a PNO committee and the recycling board, so anyway, it's just a little...
Karen, you, you got the, the, a number eight changed to Healthy Homes Department?
Yes.
Okay.
The East Bay Green Corridor Partnership?
You know, I've been having troubles getting to that one. It's kind of strange times and...
Does it meet twice a year now?
It meets a couple times, but it's always...
Middle of the day?
Middle of the day.
I cannot do that.
I'll take that.
Okay, Nora will do that. The Emeryville Oakland JPA?
I'd like to stay on that.
Yeah, because I don't meet so often.
Yeah.
There you go. I just lost the page, so I have to...
So can I say on that one, the JPA, there's 13 and 14, and I think 14 is a typo?
Yes, yes.
So if you could, yeah, take that off, and I'm not all by myself on the appellate council. And for some reason, Asher doesn't get on that one.
I don't know why I, I switched my, oh, I touched something. So now...
This is the Gilman playing fields.
appellate council, Gilman, oh, so the Gilman playing fields. I, I can't go to that anymore. It's the same night as Parks and Rec, and so then I have a childcare difficulty.
I'll do the Gilman.
Okay.
If they'll tell me when they're having their meetings, which they're very poor at doing.